Probando, uno, dos, probando.
So your parents, your teachers, you were in the school. And they never forget that. Many students will come back to us. First year teaching student. A lot of difficulties I did, but as I learned, we had a lot of. Relationships and challenges, gratitude by any classroom. As long as he started to see that, it turned around with him. So that was just a small little impact that helped through that difficult patch here. We all do teach for a while, but I'm just gonna say thank you on behalf of educators.
To be standing before you as the proud new principal at Spring High School. This evening, I've been an explorer of Spring, showed up to the administration building. And I've seen one side of town to the other, and so I'm continuing to learn and grow within Spring. So I'm deeply honored again and grateful to have been chosen to lead this outstanding community of learners. And I would like to take this opportunity to express my sincerest thank you to you. I am thrilled to be a part of the Spring ISD community where everyone that I've encountered over the last couple of weeks have been laser focused on the well-being of our students and what excellence means for each and every one of our students. Also want to extend a special thank you to my parents, they're both educators as well, they're in the Dallas area. My mom, dad, and sister, my nephew as well in Dallas, and my family that's watching on the links from all over the nation as well. I would also like to thank my wife. And I just thank her for doing that while in medical school and choosing to support me as well. So I'd also like to acknowledge mentors. Has guided me through each and every moment here at Spring as well. And their continued support has been invaluable to me because it's helped me renew in this work. I've also been blown away by the community in general, we have so many options, so many programs. I want to make sure that our students can access and have choice in what they want to do with their teachers. The kids have already tested me on my Spanish. They tested me on my Arabic. And I've received numerous emails and stops in the hallway to resolve issues immediately. So I am seriously just so proud to be part of a place where students, teachers, everyone is focused on how can we do better? How can we make this better? How can we resolve issues? I'm clear-eyed about the urgency of the work ahead, but I'm steadfast in my commitment to our students and providing them with a world-class education. With the support of the community of educators, citizens, and students, I'm confident that great things are on the horizon for Spring High School. And in closing, I just want to say that thank you for this incredible opportunity again. And let's work together to make Spring High School the best it can be. Thank you and go Lions.
Welcome to San Antonio, and we're excited to have you as part of our Spring family. I'm actually gonna recess the board meeting for a few minutes so that we can a little meet and greet with our counselors and let them get home. So I'm gonna recess for about fifteen minutes and then we'll reopen the meeting, and the time is now six forty-three. Good evening, we will now reconvene tonight's meeting, and the time is now six fifty-three PM. Our next item is agenda participation. This allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before they are considered by the board. Mr. McGee, do we have anyone registered for agenda participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Innovation, Matt Garisler.
Thank you, President Drayant. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Rosa. This presentation will be on the yellow packet, which you have, is on our middle-of-year student academic update. So I will ask Turkessa Taylor, our Director of Student Assessment, as well as Dr. Tracy Harris, our Assistant Sub of Academics. And then we have two Assistant Subs of Schools, Dr. Hilarion Martinez and Dr. Natasha Watson, who will be coming up to provide the presentation and update for us tonight.
Good afternoon, President Durant, the Board of Trustees, our senior leadership team, and our Super Cloud Superintendent, Dr. Rosa. You will be provided with overview of the middle-of-year data. As always, we want to make sure that our work is aligned with the strategic priorities tonight. We will focus on student outcomes, equity, as well as leadership. We always provide the board updates in alignment with Long Start government's framework in an effort to ensure that we are improving student outcomes. The theory of action will continue to drive our work as always. And we are always trying to reach our long start goal of looking at excellent and equitable outcomes for all students. So we're gonna start tonight looking at our circle progress. And so you'll see the four subsets, the four sub-tests that we are focused on with our circle assessments. The students that took this assessment were our pre-K students. And if you take a look at the chart, you'll see for fall 2022 where our students were and where we are now at the middle of the year, so you'll see a lot of progress was made in all four areas. This chart breaks down the data even further, looking at various groups, looking at male, female, our economically disadvantaged students, special education, as well as our emergent bilingual population. You will also see that we are way, way above target in reaching our end-of-year goals. Pass it over to Natasha for responsible support. So first, I'd like to say that we are super excited about the progress of our pre-K scholars and what the pre-K teachers have done thus far. So if you'll notice on the PowerPoint, we have what we're going to actually do to ensure that we continue this progress, but also that our scholars not only exceed the end of the year, but they're geared up and ready for their kindergarten. So let's talk about centers. I know that everyone in here has possibly been in a pre-K classroom. Now, when we walk into a pre-K classroom, it's busy. You see lots of playing and centers, you see kids energized, but I do want you guys to know that part of that structured play is very important with our pre-K learners. The activities that they're actually wearing in the centers that they're involved in are centered around not only literacy and math, but social and fine motor skills. And so this is critical when you think about a whole child and their development. So yes, they're playing, it is structured, but it's also critical that we ensure that the activities that are happening within the centers are of high quality. So that takes us to the next bullet, which talks about our PLC and plan. At the beginning of the year, Dr. Carter will talk about what we do across the district as it relates to our PLCs. Well, even for our pre-K teachers, they're involved in our planning PLC, and it's critical that they come together with coaches and specialists to ensure that the activities in the classrooms and the centers are of high quality. So another thing that they also have the ability to experience is we have what we call the CLI Engage Dashboard. CLI stands for Children's Learning Institute. This is a dashboard that is provided free to all pre-K teachers. It's a progress monitoring dashboard where they can go into this dashboard and access activities that are centered around those targeted skills that are the student test on in circle. So we're talking about road naming for math, okay? We're talking about phonological awareness and then helping students to understand their lettering sign. And so these activities, actually, a teacher can go in. If I know that I want to work on smartphone instruction because Natasha is not doing it, that's my name as well. They can actually go in, print out a lesson, it describes everything they do from step one to step two. It also has videos where, think about if we had a real high-tech that's in pre-k. It's an example or video that would show me exactly how to do that as well. So I think that is critical to our teachers who may not know how to do that if I love it, and that allows them to be able to give them to follow everything they need. The next thing I want to talk about is Parent Day. We know parent conferences are coming up, and we will be having that data conversation for our young scholars. This will allow for the teachers and the parents to actually talk about each individual student and be able to talk about their progress and what we need to do to ensure that they grow for the end of the year. Not only will they talk about that progress, they also will be given resources and tools so that when they go home, they can actually practice these skills. These are resources they do not have to purchase. We're talking about household items where they can pull out and begin to help the student, their individual child based on their progress with targeted skills. So I am super excited about pre-K and also pre-K scholars, they set goals. And now we will move on to in-class. And so for in-class, our students, the students that we assess with this particular assessment is going to be our kindergarten.
is going to be our kindergarten students of second grade. And so you will see with the, this first chart, when you see the green circles, that's progress. So you will see in every area, we are making lots of progress, and we are so excited about the work that is happening with our students. Here, you see that our goal for twenty-twenty-three by the end of the year is sixty percent. Our emergent bilingual students have already surpassed that goal. And so again, when we look at these numbers, we are well on our way to reaching our end-of-year goal. So we are really, really excited about the work again. Here you see a side-by-side comparison with our Black students and our Hispanic students. So you are able to see where all of our students are. The numbers indicate the number of students that we have in each of those areas as well as those percentages. We have a response and support.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. And so for the time that we received our data, we've taken the following actions to build upon the growth that we experienced during the fall semester. As with any other assessments, we've taken the time to analyze and to triangulate this data. We've looked at the data from a vicious perspective at the campus level. We've looked at the performance of grade levels, individual teachers. We've looked at our subgroups. We've drilled down also to individual students and specific skills and how our students have performed on that. We've done this so that we are able to identify trends across the data and also root causes. This also has allowed us to evaluate systems within our schools. And so we've also put the, done this task so that we're able to clearly identify where our students are at right now and what supports and resources are needed to get more students to be reading at or above grade level by the end of the school year. In addition to this analysis, we've also conducted D-DEP meetings. D-DEP stands for Data Driven Action Plan, it Action Plans. During these meetings, our teachers and our administrators have collaboratively developed action plans to address the needs of our students based on the data. These plans include some of the components that you see here in front of you. First, in-class intervention. We're very fortunate that in-class is not only a platform to assess our students. This in-class also is a program that provides intervention support that is based on student data. In-class facilitates the intervention process by strategically grouping students based on their needs. So right now, our teachers are modifying their groups and modifying what skills are taught during small group instruction. In addition to that, during the spring semester, we'll also be progress monitoring our students very closely using ongoing formative assessments. Our goal is not to wait until the end of the school year to determine whether our students are making progress. Our goal is to consistently monitor our students and strategically intervene when progress is not being made. We will utilize ongoing formative assessments provided by in-class and also some that are selected by our campuses. Lastly, I think we would all agree that our teachers are our greatest resource in our district and in our campuses. And so for that reason, we are invested in making sure that they have the resources and the skillset necessary to carry out effective early literacy instruction. And so in order to continue to build their capacity, we will be doing the following. We will be offering sneak peek trainings, and that's an opportunity for our teachers to come together with our curriculum and instruction team. They will look at the scope and sequence. They will identify skills that will be taught in the coming days and weeks. And together, they will develop plans on how to best teach those skills. We're also very excited for now. We have amplified consultants at every school. And so these consultants are supporting our teachers and our leaders in a variety of ways. Everything from attending P L Cs to making sure that our teachers, our leaders are more comfortable with curriculum. They are helping internalize lessons, modeling lessons, providing feedback on lessons, their teachers' carryouts. They're doing whatever it takes to ensure that our literacy instruction is improving on our campuses. Lastly, our teachers will have the opportunity to attend these two events. The District's Learning Fair, which will be held on February twenty-fifth, and our job-alike-a-day, which will be on March tenth. During these sessions, there will be specific sessions for our early childhood teachers, again, focused on early literacy skills. How do we best teach comprehension, phonetic awareness, phonics, vocabulary development, all of those things? And so we strongly believe that better equipped teachers will lead to more of our students reading at grade level and ultimately lead to more improved equitable outcomes for all of our students.
Our last assessment that we will take a look at is math. And so math is a norm reference test that measures both achievement and growth. And if you look at the tables that we've provided for you, you will see that in almost every area, our students are either, are either meeting expectations or they are exceeding expectations. And so you'll see that the orange graph on the reading chart represents where that targeted score is. And then you'll see on this chart for the math where the blue, where the blue, where the blue squares are, that is where the target areas align. So again, you'll see that in both areas, our students are either meeting or exceeding the expectations. Here you see where our female students are outperforming all the rest of the students in all grade levels and all areas. Here you see all of the populations. Again, we have worked in the data down, looking at male, female, economically disadvantaged, spent, our spent population, emergent bilingual, as well as gifted and talented. And once again, you see our E students that are outperforming. Here, you see the side-by-side comparison. Again, it is very important that we are looking deep, that we're taking a deep dive, looking at our Black students as well as our, as well as our descent students. And so you are able to see that data. As we talk about growth, our end-of-the-year goal is sixty-eight percent. You will see our G T students are well on their way of hitting that sixty-eight percent goal by the end of the year. And as we talk about predictions, so again, when you see the green squares, that means we are meeting the expectation. And so you see a lot of green on this chart. And so this is start prediction for math. So our students, again, we are well on our way to being successful on the upcoming star assessments. And so here is the math. Again, you see a lot of green. And if you look at where we were when we did our boy assessment and where we are now, you can see the growth that the students are making. And so we are well on our way again. And so here, as always, we break that data down so that you're able to see it in all of our different populations. You see again, our gifted, our gifted and talented students are well above. They are outperforming. And now we'll have a response by Latrice.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. As you heard my colleagues explain, we have multiple strategies we utilize to ensure that our students meet their end-of-the-year goals. As educators, when we receive data, the first thing we want to do is disaggregate our data by campus, by teacher, and by student. The reason we disaggregate our data by campus is so as the Office of Academics team and the School Leadership Office, we can determine which campus needs the most support. Principals disaggregate their data by teacher so they can tell, determine which teachers need the most support. And teachers disaggregate their data, of course, by students so they can determine which students need the most support. And we have several reports that teachers use to help them inform their decisions as they're creating their intervention groups. One of the reports that we use is the class breakdown by R I T. R I T stands for R A S H Unit of Measurement. And it simply means that every student who completes a math assessment will receive a skill score. Based on this report, teachers will be able to take the skill scores and the R I T for each student and create groups. So using this report will tell the teacher which students are below grade level, which students are on grade level, and which students are above grade level. We want to make sure that teachers are providing intensive support. And so by having this report and understanding how to support students, they will be able to do that. Another report that we use is called the Learning Continuum Report. This, this report drills down even further, and it identifies the specific skills and the content that's assessed by MAP, and it helps teachers create intervention groups, whether those intervention groups are small group instruction, intervention groups for after-school tutorials, or for Saturday school. We want to make sure that we are not providing support just one size fits all. So that's why it's really important for teachers to understand what standards students have mastered, what standards they haven't mastered, so that they can create those very specific intervention groups. Another report that we use is a family report. As you heard my colleague share, and you, you guys already are aware, we have Parent Teacher Conference Day on February seventeenth. So one of the reports that we use is a family report. This gives the parents an idea of how their students are performing in school. It shows them how their students have performed historically, if they've taken math more than one year. It provides growth goals, and it also provides a prediction on how they will perform on STAR. So for me, I think about this as the why. When we're asking parents for students to stay after school or come on Saturdays for Saturday tutorials, that they can use this knowledge from this parent-teacher conference to kind of understand why we are asking for them to come on Saturdays or stay after school. Another level of support that we have is Amplify, Eureka, and Carnegie support. As you know, that is our core curriculum. And so we have one thousand P D days that we've already secured. And so with that, our campuses are able to receive multiple days of support. We wanted to make sure that this support is customized. We wanted to make sure it wasn't, again, a one-size-fits-all. And so we had individual meetings with Amplify and Principals, with Eureka and Principals, and with Carnegie and Principals, because we wanted Principals to be able to advocate for the type of support they, that they receive. And that support varies from campus to campus. It may look like Amplify, Eureka, and Carnegie pushing into P L Cs. They may model lessons for teachers. They may support teachers and leaders with less internalization or data analysis, whatever is needed for that campus. As I've talked to Principals about the level of support they have been receiving, they have been saying that that feedback is beneficial or that support has been beneficial. So the feedback shows us that this support is going well. Another level of support that we have is student data conferences. As you heard Dr. Watson mention, that pre-K students also are having student conferences. So from elementary, middle school to high school, our students are engaged in student conferences. We want to make sure that students feel empowered, they're able to advocate for their own learning, and understand what we are teaching and how we can best support them. So it's a collaborative approach and it is shared decision-making. We want to make sure that we have student voice with our data conferences. There is a report in MAP called the Student Profile Report that teachers use that give them all this data. It tells how students have performed on the most recent math assessment that they've taken. It also provides that historical data, and also it helps teachers set growth goals for students. One of the things that I really like about this report is the rapid, rapid guessing. And so if students are just clicking through and just guessing, teachers have that information on this report, and they're able to have conversations with students about really taking their time, engaging, and doing their very best. So as you can see, we have a multitude of strategies that we're using to ensure that we have excellent and equitable outcomes for all of our scholars.
Thank you. Our sheets that we got are just slightly different from yours. All right, so I had questions as I was reviewing this material. And so I'm going to try to guide you to the right pages, but I think we may be off here and there. The first thing is, very close to the beginning of your section, you have a terminology of wave one and wave two. It's my page forty-seven in my notebook. It was page eight in your original presentation. Did Dr. Jensen want the header? Pardon, but header is the title of that. It says Circle on Track by Subtest. It's page forty-seven in my notebook, page eight in the presentation. I just wonder what's wave one and wave two.
So the first, the first test that we took was fall twenty-twenty-two. So we took that first assessment in September. So that was wave one. And then wave two is the test that we just took this week.
So it's the B O Y.
Yes, ma'am.
Huge difference in these increases in scores. The other thing, next page, page nine, it said, when you were talking about the students who are on track by sub-test and by a student group. I can tell you what I, really bears out at me is how special education is today. I'm very concerned about that. And I was really glad to hear you want student voice in conferences because I have heard at conferences that really we should be including special ed students in that art. And I don't think that has ever been done with, for my grandkids or especially. Yeah, I just wondered if that is feasible in our district.
So yes, with student conferences and speaking to the special education, for that percentage up there, there are actually a hundred and seventeen pre-K students. And so that number is enlarged, so when you think about the totality. But one of the things that's critical with the overall mathematics is the way that you assess. And so what we have to be intentional about with working with our spent scholars, we are having conversations with them. For example, with math, one of the actual assessments targets name shape. So helping us to identify shapes, but really helping them at their skill level to understand the difference. And so it can be done. We just have to be mindful of what their ability to do as well. And pushing that on to me, what's needed.
I was just, you know, a person isn't like either special ed or normal. I think that a lot of kids who are not identified quite often have many challenges in different areas. So I was just really concerned with the difference in the scores on this little kid. So what you're saying is that it could be language as well as the actual mathematics.
There are many variables. That's why we have to, as Assistant Soup, we sit down with each campus to actually look at the student list to identify what is needed to assist that student. Because we know at this early age, they may not be fully developed. So we have to kind of target and drill down to what specifically they may need or what the area of maybe.
You're still getting to know them.
Yes.
On my page in my notebook, page fifty-three, the presentation was page. My page fourteen is in the presentation, and it's an in-class assessment overall in the cross-grade levels. And it's the B O Y and M O Y. And it didn't look like there was such progress from what I was looking at, but.
I can speak to that. So the, the presentation in your yellow folder was the updated one. There were a few tweaks. But slide number fourteen was repetitive. And so what we did was we removed that because fourteen in your binder and sixteen in your binder showed the same thing. And so instead of keeping fourteen where sixteen was a similar format that was used in the other assessment data to represent the differences, we, we removed slide fourteen completely. That's the one that's in your binder.
The bar graphs even seem to be different from the data in the updated thing. So I can just go with that later. On my page fifteen, which is going to be alright, you know, it's still page fifteen. Students who are emergent bilingual from the district of the MOY assessment call grade levels tested. I just want to point out the GT students did too. The next one I'm interested in is some of each thing's answers. I had questions here and you already answered them, so I didn't want to bring up something that you Alright, it is page sixty-four in my notebook. Page twenty-five on Y. Alright, this one. Mine was the table. Yours is the paragraph. What's the heading of it? Math achievement results by student group. On the map, the mathematics assessment, students who are emergent bilingual in grades one through five performed better than the district for those grade levels. Okay, there it is.
So on the old deck in the binder, the circle extended all the way down, which was incorrect. So it was updated in the new slide deck in your yellow pack.
What I'm concerned about here is the, the kids in that group. They're outperforming the district in elementary school. When they get to middle school and they drop precipice. I'm very concerned about that. Any comments about why this is happening?
One of the pieces that we may be able, we may look at is that in the elementary, the emergent bilingual students are in a bilingual program where they have the Spanish support. Once the students move into middle school, their program is an ESL program. And so many times, the program is all in English and we, of course, use all strategies to communicate with them. The teachers oftentimes do not speak Spanish. In the middle schools, we also have a large number of youth immigrants coming in. So there may be more of an issue with the language versus the content skills. We'll definitely look into it in work. But that is often the case that they show a drop in middle school.
I just really would like those elementary kids who are in bilingual programs to be proficient enough in English to perform in middle school. When you're required to be, I assume, more independent than what I think sometimes.
Agreed. Yes, definitely agree. And if you'll recall, last year we came to the board and requested the ability to change our bilingual program to a dual language program where the students are receiving more English instruction much earlier in the elementary grades. Because we had, we have consistently noticed this big dip. And so I see the team nodding their heads. So starting this year is the first year that we are doing dual language in the elementary all the way through fifth grade. And so you'll see that by third, fourth, fifth grade, it's fifty-fifty instead of what we had before, which was a gradual increase of English. So we've addressed it by modifying our dual language or our bilingual program. And then the, the big push is still to support our teachers and students in middle school, specifically the new, the newcomers. Because we continue to get more newcomers in the secondary. But definitely acknowledge that, that big drop when the students get to middle school.
So before we move on, that really highlights why it was important that we make that change with the dual language program, because we have continued and consistently seen that dip at a middle school level. I'd like to hear from those nodding their head now that we're at the middle of the year. How is that change implemented? And do we anticipate that we'll start to see some outcomes? Or are there opportunities and challenges we want to address now?
I'm the very proud director of the multiple programs under the guidance of Dr. Melissa. We have, we saw the need, like Dr. Nelson said, to do all as a board last year to change our program model. So pre-K to fifth, we now have a fifty-fifty model. Those of us that are very well versed in dual language models for about fifteen years now, we were one of the few districts that were not at that model. So we already see a great improvement when we go to our pre-K classrooms where half the data being taught in English and then half the data being taught in Spanish. We're using the math as our English strand because, you know, math is universal. Along with some strategies like preview, review. The other thing that we have noticed in middle school is we had new ELA, ELDA teacs that the state put out during COVID. So those were kind of in the background. So we got really busy and put together a curriculum design team specifically to design the ELDA and ELA curriculums. The ELA curriculum is new to the state. It's English Learner's Language Arts. That takes the place of the ELA for newcomers. Our newcomers did not have a curriculum in place for that. We now do and it's working out beautifully. We created all of the curriculum. We have sessions for teachers every single week where we go and look forward to what's coming up the next week. We have video of the teachers, the kiddos have told us how successful they feel. We believe that this is going to make a huge difference. They also added, the state also added the ELDA. Also curriculum, it's, it's curricular teacs to support the language of English language development and acquisition. So along with our ELA, if I'm a long term and I'm still in sixth grade at ESL, I have a second block in my schedule where all it is is English language development. And that's purely just developing the language. We're very hopeful and we expect to see some great gains due to these two curriculums that were designed this year and we're piloting this year. We look forward to also our dual language kiddos. And, and I know that at the International School and at Northgate, they're really outperforming those that have been in the dual language program that the two-way are at times outperforming the kiddos in the benchmarks. So we already seen the results in that program that's been going on for now four years and five at pre-K and SISB. I mean, at Northgate, I'm sorry. So we expect to see some great results. And we thank you for, you know, honoring that proposal that we have for dual language. So we hope to see some great gains there.
They already solved the problem.
I seem to recall that when we first talked about the two-way dual language programs, is ours a two-way dual language program?
We have two campuses that are a two-way dual language program. The School of International Studies at BAML, which is a pre-K and we rolled it up to fourth grade. And as you recall, that's the program that came from Purge and from the other school. And so now it's at the International School. And we also have our second two-way dual language school, it's Northgate. And they are a K four M.
That was, I seem to recall that in anticipation.
Yes.
Benefit of that.
But now we're a full dual language school district with one way at all our other twenty-three schools.
I'm going to continue to press for two-way dual language. It says bring on staff to support it. I have a bunch of questions. And I will express frustration, Dr. Nelson, you talked about this. The variance between the presentation and what's provided in our binder. I marked my binder up pretty well. And then you can hear it's, there's a separate folder with different information on it. That's a little bit frustrating. And I don't want to step on what Debbie's doing, but I have a bunch of questions over some of the same slides.
It's page twenty-six in the presentation. It's the map on above grade level mathematics results for grade eight, grade alpha one. I got mentioned this last year and I'm going to mention it again. I can't figure out why the black emergent bilingual kids are doing so much better than the Hispanic emergent bilingual. Is it going to be the middle school language problem again? It's going to be the number, the number of black emergent bilingual students. I believe we have a hundred and, right.
So if you look at the chart, the numbers are really small. And so it, it does, the percentages are larger, but the, the numbers are really small. So it's a small number of students in comparison to the number of Hispanic students that we have.
I think it's interesting that the students who are self-identified as black
Do you, and Mr. Adams acknowledged, and we work very hard to not have to do this and bring an updated presentation. The team is very aware. If you look at slide twenty-five in your handout, one of the reasons they revised it is because in the copy that you receive, we failed to indicate the number of students. And so in the folder on page twenty-five, and this was a big question, Dr. Jensen, that we also had. You know, the black emergent bilingual students are doing so much better than the Hispanic emergent bilingual students. And what you see there is our numbers are very small. You'll see ninety-nine total black students. Forty-seven of them being female and fifty-two being male. So the numbers are very small compared to when you look at our total Hispanic emergent bilinguals. Now you're looking at larger numbers. We have identified the black emergent bilingual students and who they are. Of course, you know, different origins and know that our, the law says the students and their parents get to choose their ethnicity. So they mark, if we don't look at any documentation to say you're black, you're Hispanic, or you speak another language aside from giving them the language test upon entry into a US school.
I just think it's very interesting that those black students are not representative sample of the overall emerging bilinguals. On my page thirty, it's BLY, the MOY math percent that first by student group. And it's twenty-eight on your presentation up here. I, I'm sorry, I wanted to believe not that. Nope, I do want to go ahead. It's going to be twenty-nine on your presentation, it's thirty in our book. It said mathematics from BLY to MOY male students and students who are emergent bilingual likely weren't likely to meet expectations compared to the district overall. There's many places in the state that the females keep out from the boys. I just wanted to get a draw here for boys, okay? And also the emergent bilinguals are doing very well. This is eight, one through eight. Alright, this next one is my page thirty-four. Math MOY star prediction by student group. They're predicting how well they're going to do on the STAR. So we're predicting that the gifted kids are really going to be, it stops here. They're really like, almost every gifted child is going to be passing the STAR test, right? Is that what I've seen? Once again, I was very worried about the special ed that we're reading. They expect only in the twenties of special ed kids to be making their STAR.
Yes ma'am, as we, as we discussed, we looked at the data as a team and the special education team, special services team has meetings with each member of their team that supports campuses. And we've looked at the data and disaggregated it by campus to know which campuses need additional support. We're also having meetings with principals to go over each specific student and look at how students have performed and create a plan of support to ensure that we are pushing in and providing that support. That support could look like training for teachers. It could look like POCs are just modeling different layers of support just to determine what they need and to provide that extra layer of support. Because we look at the results and the reports and we realize that our, of course, our special education students are performing lower than the other demographic groups. And so we are devising a plan to ensure that we are there to support campuses to impact the, the performance of our students.
It just seems that any student group in our whole school system is special ed students who have multiple experts looking at their test results and creating a learning plan for them. And I just wondered, is it that it's the learning plan is not being implemented? Or are you also focusing in on why there's a disconnect? A learning plan that is, you know, absolutely individually designed to help that student is somehow not working very well.
I think also we, as students have their individual IEPs, we are working to implement those and make sure that we are tailoring our support for what the students need. When students qualify for special education, sometimes they're more than one grade level behind. So it just may take some time in order for them to master the skills that we are providing for them. But we try to make sure that we're really customizing that support. And it's usually based on their IEP, what type of support and strategies that we need to provide for them. And sometimes it's that they just take a little bit longer to acquire and to master the skills.
I, I would also add that on this particular assessment, some of the accommodations that is in the plan that Dr. Harris just mentioned, they may not have received on this particular test, but they will get it on the STAR test. So for an example, continent language support is a, is an accommodation that our special education, our special education students will receive on the STAR assessment. So a lot of the accommodations that they will be able to receive that's in their IEP, they will get on the actual STAR assessment. But this is a different assessment, it's MAP. And so some of those things that are embedded in the STAR assessment, they just won't be able to get on this assessment.
Okay, so you're saying this is not a good prediction of what they're going to, they're passing grade on the STAR?
Oh, no, 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 no. Oh, no, 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 I'm saying the accommodations. I'm saying that some of the supports that we will be able to give the student on this particular system.
Can you give an example of what one of, uh, an accommodation support?
Content and language support, content and language support is a type of support that will be built into the star assessment that will simplify the language. So, but, so a regular question that comes across for a general ed student, if the student is special education, if he qualifies for that accommodation, it will simplify that question. It will make that question easier.
Which purpose do you want that to have?
So it's just a different assessment. It's just, it's just a different test. I mean, there, there is no test that's just like the star assessment. That's just like, um, any other standardized assessment like S A T test. It's only one S A T assessment.
So to me, that if I were a person that created these assessments with this purpose, I'm the map company. And I know that some percentage of students that are gonna take this assessment will be special education. I would cancel that. That's not a question for you, that's a question for people that are creating this tool. If we're preparing them for the star exam, star exam provides these qualifications, then our tools should also provide them.
That's why I said this currently is not a really great predictor for the star compared to the other student groups who are just taking it without the accommodations.
So one thing with MAP is that it is a nationally normed test. So that, so Texas has different accommodations and supports within the star assessment that would not necessarily be true across all states. We, we can.
But they, so the standard for a premium program of education is a federal standard. The assessment, the star assessment is in compliance with I E P. Which means that any vendor or test company or whatever who's creating these tools should also.
Am I wrong? Certain components that because it's a national reference test would then change the norming that occurs. And when we're looking at a national reading predictor, um, that was part of the original matrix of how the test was created. Now for, to your point, there are certain accommodations, um, that can be utilized within this. I think when we see the special education data or the other data, we have seen some strong correlations with the accuracy of the assessment. The one thing that really speaks to our teachers and our principals is that they take this data and they intervene. So our numbers historically are higher than what we see at our middle of year predictions because of the interventions that our campuses take utilizing that. They're able to see, or all students and by groups, so students, special education who may be struggling on these standards, they're able to go in and really intervene and also work with other tools where those accommodations and supports can be utilized.
Still, I see that. Which is like, there are special education, it's not the performance. And so anybody developing tools to teach all the kids should also be a special education. It's all, I, I, it's confusing to me that this tool we use does not allow that.
Or perhaps these kids should get accommodations taking this test.
What he, what he's saying is that the, the test doesn't allow it. If at least that's what I'm understanding.
Oh, you can't even. And he's correct, he's correct. And I know this is what we've used. I don't know if there's other tools or other companies out there that would be more at parity when you see accommodations as it aligns with our star test. To show we can maybe research that and see what else is out there. I know, just an asterisk saying, uh, teachers that, uh, they, uh, you know, there's this problem between the, uh, especially to start and predict. I'm not the educator, you guys are. This, to me, this says this to more rigorous, right? Uh, because the accommodations aren't there and it gives us, um, a benchmark on opportunity to assess our students and then be, give them the, uh, additional supports that they need. It's something that's actually a little more rigorous because those accommodations are.
When will the mock star, because that will be the most applicable to.
So, so this test, just to remind the team, this test is a nationally normed test. This test is not a, a state of Texas test. It's a much more rigorous exam that is looking at national skills and standards. What the company has discovered and we have discovered is when we are working with students at a very rigorous level, there is a high correlation to their performance on the star exam. And so when we want to, and this test does have some accommodations for special education students. The best predictor and most supportive and aligned to our state test is what T E A has for us, which, you know, we call the release test, but it's also online. So Ms. Taylor, will you talk about the test when we're giving that? And the students actually get the accommodations, um, on the computer and everything that's aligned. And it is the star release.
Right, so we are actually in the window, so we are getting ready now, um, uh, to give that student, give that assessment now. So we are in the middle of the year and we are, uh, getting ready now to provide that assessment, uh, which the students will be able to take this assessment online. Um, we work with, um, just as Dr. Watson said, with the release item. So we are actually taking a release star assessment where the accommodation will be embedded into that assessment.
This is just one of our tools that helps us identify opportunities to intervene.
It's, for me, it's an issue of, of like, so I could share the. So it seems to me really obvious that this test does not effectively apply for our special education students. Uh, that we need a tool that will accurately assess them. I mean, if you want to, I mean, the analogy of the kid standing on the box or, you know, with the ladder or whatever. Having the kids do, uh, sort of a pre-assessment in preparation for the star, it doesn't closely reflect what their experience with it when they take the star. That's not it.
And we will, um, definitely reach out to the vendor and express those concerns and see what they may have in the works for additional accommodations. I will say, when we administer this assessment, is that it is in line with the student's I E P. Um, we have two different areas in our I E P, one for state assessments and one for district assessments. And so the accommodations provided are different, um, based on those, those elements. What MAP has done for us is create a predictor based on what they've seen across the state for star specifically. Um, T E A also regularly uses MAP data in their own reports and, um, and the supports that they build out. So there is a, there is a partnership with T E A, but we will explore what, what they're doing for those additional accommodations.
Can I just say something real quick, um, Mr. Adams, uh, to your point? Um, if we go back and look at the, uh, the map, math for, for our state students, we can see that it is aligned to the majority of our subgroups, totally in agreement with what you're talking about. When I think about the star predictor, what I really wanna dig in deeper, what we can look at is how does the prediction come about? There's actually a study, I wanna know how the scale scores are actually calculated because the predictor with the growth, I think that's where we need to kind of hone in. Because if we look at how our kids, specific kids are grown, they are growing in line with our other subgroups, but it's something with the predictor as well.
You're saying Dr. Watson, they, so, cause I was looking at trend, right? Somebody said earlier, is they move through our system, like the, the ultimate goal is to be dismissed.
Yes.
Like I said, we shouldn't. The ultimate goal is the vision not being.
Exactly.
So I, I see the marginal growth, I guess this is a total, it's kids' progression system. It's, and, and looking at this through an equity exam. It bothers me that this tool that's, I, I actually know that too. Again, I'm telling you, the percentage of students in the country, or at least it appears to be. That's a problem. And because our special education kids have been underperforming since before I had on this board, like, we, we sort of banging our head against this wall with, with these kids. And then to hear that, well, we just don't do that for these kids, even though that's what they do. I don't understand.
So I totally agree, and we'll go back, cause I'd like to go a little bit more digging as well with the predictor. I would just want to ask the follow-up about the state while we're here. And just like, um, trustee Adams mentioned with the trend of the need for special education students, how are, especially knowing that we have a higher level or a higher number of newer teachers compared to reading board, compared to the state, how are we training and supporting new teachers in terms of, um, understanding accommodations, implementing accommodations, working with their, um, inclusion teacher or the special education teacher? How is that happening there? How are we monitoring that?
Great question. So I can give an example of a middle school. And so as we conduct our purposeful visits, our spec, uh, special ed department tags along with us. And we've had a focus on special ed. And the focus, uh, as we visit classrooms and diagnose the special program, we identify things that need to be done, everything from building the capacity of our co-teachers because they are in the fashion right here, next to the teachers. And making sure that they're not just aggressively monitoring, but actually adding value. And so our, uh, special ed department is working with them, everything from our stepfinders, making sure that I E Ps are there present, that our teachers know how to utilize that. And that's happening during, uh, our P L Cs, to be honest with you. Uh, on a weekly basis, they're visiting the P L Cs, working on I E P supplemental aid to making sure that our special students have all of the resources that they, they need in order to be successful. So we are attacking it from various lenses, but it's usually during our P L Cs and they're giving that support from our special ed department.
So inclusion teachers are sitting in.
I know there was a need, have we still, do we still have vacancies first?
I know Dr. Hill probably has the numbers, but yes, we continue to have vacancies in special education as well as in our bilingual program. The, you know, most, um, specialized, um, like across the region and the state, those are the two hard to fill areas.
So I'm gonna follow. I had a follow-up question on that same topic. And I think, uh, trustee McDaniel, you, you kind of touched on my thought. Um, and it's, maybe it's too simplistic, too simplistic of a question. But do we know why we are two to three times lower in percentage than the state and region? Cause we're talking about testing, we're talking about supporting teachers. And the reason I, your question brought that up, I thought, well, is it, is it the teachers? Do we have too many first-year teachers? Yeah, what, what work has been done to, to identify where is the problem? Because to trustee Adams' point, it's, it's something that's been going on for a long time. And now we have these new tools that are gonna help us along the process. But do we really know where the issue is? Where, where, gotta know where we're starting from before we can begin to solve it. So that's kind of my question.
I think one of the things that, you know, trying to identify the root cause of why students are, uh, performing lower than their peers is really looking at each individual student. And so when we have conversations with teachers, um, and principals, and like we, we shared, um, these, you know, special education teachers are in P L Cs working alongside teachers. And so it varies from student to student as to why they specifically, you know, may be performing lower. But in terms of the levels of support that we're providing, as we know that all students aren't performing on grade level. Um, students, you know, across our district aren't performing on grade level. But specifically, uh, with special education students, we've been really intentional about having those conversations and providing support. And so we're looking at students based on how they're mastering each concept. And, you know, students, some students are, just take a little bit longer, um, to master those concepts. And so we have a lot of support in place, um, in terms of, uh, providing training for our special education teachers at the beginning of the year and throughout the year. There are monthly sessions that, um, our special education team has as we are looking at data and trying to, um, develop or determine those root cause, the root cause analysis. And for each student, it's just case by case. And so to, you know, to be able to say that all of our students are performing lower for one particular reason is just really not the, the, the case. Um, and so it's really important for us to, you know, sit with teachers and, you know, um, just look at each student and look at how they're mastering those standards and the I E Ps that we have written for them and how, what supports we're providing for them. Um, but we, you know, we have a lot of those structures in place. It's just not necessarily a one size fits all, but based on student by student.
So, so I'll push back a little bit. If that is true, then those are things that were targeted. And if that's what we've always done, it's not changing, then there still seems to be an issue. So that's kind of my question, if we're just doing the same thing over and over, do we really know whether it's possible? And I, I'm not expecting an answer tonight, it's just, you know, super thought.
I think you'll be able to see some of that data when we look at the TAPER report and you'll be able to see, um, your grades three through eight as well as your E O Cs by group. And you'll be able to see where spring I S D is in comparison to the state, to the region and to the state. I can tell you just last year and what we're seeing this year for the first time. Last year and this year, we're seeing significant growth in our special education student population. Is it, and if you'll recall, a year ago, we were talking about this, is it where it needs to be? Absolutely not. I think it goes back to what Dr. Harris is saying and, uh, Dr. Watson is saying. What we are monitoring is, are they making the growth? And then for us, as we tell teachers and we just, you know, met with our principals yesterday, what anyone expects is one year's growth in a one year's time. However, in spring I S D, what we ask and what our students need to do is a year and a half growth in one year's time. Because if you're just growing a year at a time, we will always be behind. And so we work with our principals, we work with our teachers. And, you know, the incentives that we have is to promote and get that one year and a half. Ultimately, we need two years, our kids need to grow much faster than everyone else. But when you look at the TAPER report, not that we are where we need to be, but just today, we had a phone call with T E A, um, and our special education department. And, you know, they're, uh, T E A special education department celebrating the amount of growth. Um, so for once, we're not being monitored on, are we making growth in student achievement? There's other things that we need to work on, but for once, T E A was very pleased with what we're doing. Is it where it needs to be? No. And so we agree, you know, the pushback is good pushback because we do that with each other. Um, but the growth last year, what our teachers did last year with our students and what our teachers are doing now and what we are seeing early indicators are that our special education students are growing, um, faster than they've ever grown before. I'm gonna intervene a little bit here. We got a long night and, uh, Dr. H kind of timed it out. We are really, we're gonna be here until about ten fifteen and this is the dialogue. I'm not trying to, to stop the dialogue. I just wanna maybe recommend we facilitate a little different so it can be a little more productive when we are flipping through pages. Can we go to, um, the first page of the data? Yes, that would be eight. And then let's all get all of our questions, it's slide by slide, right? Okay. And then everybody can participate in the conversation. Um, and we'll catch up where, where Debbie left off. Is that fair? I think that works better. Okay, so let's start at the beginning, let everybody get their questions in on each slide.
I think that works better. Okay. So let's start at the beginning. Let everybody get their questions in on each slide until we catch up with where we left off with that. I think that might help us move along a little faster.
I was asking questions on this section. I was going to thank you all for.
Oh, you're finished?
Doing all this testing, trying to assess the kids because there's nothing worse than working your tough softball semester to teach kids. And uh, then you get a big surprise on the test. It's not a good surprise. I I once heard a story about somebody slugging their way through a jungle, you know, this old story. And they get up a tree to look at and they realize that they've been going through the wrong jungle. So we don't want to go through the wrong jungle. We want to, so these predictors and everything else help us to be in the right place where our struggles are going to be.
Thank you. All right. I I just, my comment is I'm really excited to see the growth we see here from the middle, from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. And I'm just going to open it up for my colleagues if anyone has questions on this slide.
I just want to be clear that I understand what this is. So weight one was the beginning of the year, weight two was the middle of the year for the same cohort of students. Alright, so we had the uh, the goal progress measure, which is just on the next page of my book. Um, our goal progress measure is to increase uh, for letter sound and phonological awareness from eighty-eight percent to ninety percent and eighty-two percent to eighty-four percent by the end of the year. And I'm wondering where we got the numbers for the goal progress measures. Does it look like for those two, we went from forty-three to eighty-one, which again is impressive growth. We went from twenty-five to eighty-seven. So this question is more around not like the great work that was done here, but how we've established those goal progress measures.
Can I ask Dr. Parisol? That's part of our five-year strategic plan and it's incremental growth, but I'll ask him to go through it.
Yes. And so with our partnership through um, the system of great schools and our partner with Goodreads in Houston, um, we developed, we looked at our baselines, we looked at growth um, as well as what was achievable growth statistically. And so for our circle and and our pre-K performance has been very high in a number of areas. Um, and so looking at where we need to be by twenty twenty-seven to meet our our goals, we broke it down into incremental growth year by year. And so when you look at those, um, the baseline is there. So for like goal one from eighty-eight percent to ninety percent for this, for this year.
That's where the eighty-eight percent.
Those were our baselines from last year's data. So before the new strategic plan, we launched our new strategic plan. That was our baseline from last year.
Kids from last year when they got the.
Yes. And so that the um, growth is also one thing to keep in mind is that with circle um, as well as MAPS that as you go through periodic components throughout the year, that the bar is also being raised. So as where we are at various junctions in the year. And so when we end the end of the year, that will be a full coverage of all the standards. And so the measurement is based on where we are. So there are different metrics. And so when you're comparing BOY to MOY at the end of the year, the the bar keeps getting raised as well.
That is interesting.
Is there a Spanish circle or what's the equivalent word for for the pre-K assessment percent?
They have English and Spanish. I have parts and portions of it are English only, but they do have English and Spanish. Any more questions on the circle? Move on. In class.
Have more of a request for in class. Um, in the same way that we look at for our MAP data, how we have the below grade level, on grade level and above grade level. I think it would be helpful to see the same thing for in class so that we get a full picture of where the kids are. For in class, it has below and well below level, and those are the kids who really need the most support. Um, if we really want to see the most growth from. So if we could see the entire picture, I think that would be helpful so that, you know. It's the reality, you know, data is not to be, it's not to place blame, it's just to see where we are. And that's going to help us to see by the end of the year, how much growth we made. So um, that would just be a request for our next data review.
You know, we used to do it that way. And we came back and said, no, you know, for you, high level, but I can assure you what uh, Dr. Martinez and Dr. Watson were talking about, they do at the school level, they do it at, you know, that deep. We were doing it, you know, way below, below, because it is broken down to like you're really, really below, then you're below, and then you're on level, and then you're above level. So they break it down so much. And what we ended up doing, I think, last year, a couple of years ago, was just grouping it. So we do have that data that way. We can go ahead and take it back down um, for the future presentations. But know that at the school level, they're absolutely working that data.
And I think it's a lot that all of us are are doing the same thing. And then it'll also help us see the trends when we look at STAR to see the kids who who we know the taper report, they don't include, they're not me, but they're still there. And we really need to focus on those kids so we can see if there's a correlation between K two when they get to starting up. So thank you.
Any other questions on the impressed data from the, from my colleagues? Just the Adams.
I'll be searching. I had just an observation on. Sixteen? Yes. So I noticed that when you look at the economically disadvantaged, black students versus Hispanic students. Our Hispanic students are outperforming. Or our Hispanic students are outperforming our black students. And so I didn't know, and this was kind of one of those areas where it just really stood out to me. So did we, does anybody look at that to see kind of? And the reason I bring it up is because it's the truth of this. And so to separate it out the way that we did and to see that. You know why the black students are so much harder.
They overtake them later.
That's what I was talking about, yeah.
Right, right. I, you brought up that question.
Yeah, I I think we've been seeing this in different ways today is that uh, from grades one through five, the Hispanic students uh, are scoring very high and then they drop.
Right, to to your point.
This is just K two.
Yeah, this is early on. So some things happen that we get onto the other grade. So apparently it's being taught in Spanish, like K two.
Just correct. As we have these need to need conversations with our principals, we're examining that. And so we're looking at everything. One of the things that's coming up is we theorize sometimes there are Hispanic students in bilingual passions, we have smaller classes. Sometimes in a bilingual passions, there's less need for SEO support. So we're looking at a variety of things that differs from campus to campus uh, and fashion to fashion. So it is something to be examined.
I think it's kind of to your point, though. If if our Hispanic students are getting so much support, what else could be different for black students?
Are they still using centers to uh, learn at this grade, K two, the whole time? I think that's an ideal way to learn because you can encourage your own speed. It's just heartbreaking to see a classroom where this store students, they get cut off just as they're about to get the concept. And then they'll see these kids who already knew the concept and they're sitting there like, oh, you know, so kudos on the centers.
Okay, we're going to look at our um, now. Achievement on above or below grade. Let's go to slide one, three one. Questions on this one, Ben?
I generally find this graph difficult to interpret. And you were explaining it. And so the orange is the target. Is that right? But then I don't, I don't know, what is the blue? What is the dark gray? What is the light gray? What's, there's a lighter gray there. I'm not sure what goes. And it's, the yellow one is the same way. I don't know what that.
The blue shows where we are on the scale and the orange is the target. So for example, when you see third grade, we are right on target. And so fourth grade, we are above the target and so on and so forth. So the orange is just where that target is. And the reason why the orange is not in the same place is because depending on the grade level, that target changes. So as the students progress, that target changes.
And the number is the RIT score? That's the target RIT score or that's what our RIT score is?
The average RIT score.
Can I confirm my my understanding is correct? That darker gray is the brackets over in the right-hand margin that shows the below grade level?
Yes.
And then that um, the on.
The shade, the other shade gray is the one that students that are above.
Yes.
And that's delineated on the, in the right-hand margin to see what else. The medium gray is right. And the dark, dark gray is below.
Questions on slide twenty-two? Let's look at the others. It looks like we're right there on every, every single one. And even the the ones that are below grade, which I like to look at the dark, dark gray, those that are are below, it's just a little below. Slide twenty-three? And four?
Where's the slide? This is mid, middle of the year data. Go back to twenty-four. This is middle of the year data. Where's the slide that shows the growth or the beginning? So there, I mean, so district-wide, we're at fifty-nine percent. Well, where were we for BOY?
That is a little confusing. It was confusing to me. It didn't give us a comparison. It just gave us a snapshot of where we are.
I believe these slides are all just achievement of where we are. If you move on to slides. And I know it's confusing, but on slides twenty-nine in my notebook, it might not be. That's where we start at growth and that's where you will see the BOY to the MOY.
So these are snapshots.
Right.
Of the map. The first group is just achievement.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you got, you got.
I just have one question about this slide. Uh, go back one. I just noticed that Algebra one and Special Ed. Thirty-three percent. And then I was just curious because I know Algebra wanted to look different. If we drew maybe five that. It's five that reads achievement and results by student group, math achievement and results by student group. It was the.
Page twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
There's Algebra one, thirty-three percent. And that, that means they're thirty-three percent. Sorry, explain me with that.
Algebra one. Algebra one, thirty-three percent is what they scored for the math at the MOY. And if we want to know the comparison from the BOY to the MOY, that's on another, a later slide.
Okay, cut. All right. Can you see that one more time?
Snapshot of the map of the middle of the year. Comparisons are behind.
Yes. So on this slide, this is just the achievement, right? Where the students are at, how many of the students were on grade level? So in special education, Algebra one, only thirty-three percent of the students, special education students met or are on grade at this point in time.
And so it's that balance between how much we put in the slides. Because so what, so we have data tables um, for this. It's about an eighty-eight page document. Um, and so we can definitely share our district data tables and then the board update. And that may provide some deeper um, insights into some of the questions that you're asking.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I mean, if it's in another slide, I pointed out some more, but I just want to know when I'm looking at this, how we did when they took the benchmark assessment at the beginning of the year. Then a whole bunch of teaching and learning happened. And in the middle of the year, I want to see, so I can see whether it went up by ten points, twenty points, whatever, or it decreased.
So do we need to go to slide thirty-one?
Yes. Thirty-one is the reading of what you just asked.
Reading.
Thirty-two is the.
Okay, I will suggest the same paper, like a slide that just shows where they are. I mean, it's nice, but just kind of unnecessary if you're going to show me on another page the growth.
And the reason we do both, uh, Mr. Adams is, you know, as we hold ourselves accountable, domain one looks at achievement. And then domain two, part A and B, looks at growth. So we want to keep our eyes on both, especially as the state accountability system is changing. And we may not get as many points on the growth. So we keep our eyes on both, on what is the achievement? And that's in a couple of slides that were early on. And then the other slides look at growth, but we can certainly just, you know, focus on growth. And like Dr. Parisol is saying, we've got the data tables, we'll make sure and make available. And then we can look at reform adding when we do the.
And let's look at that achievement because how do we incorporate a comparison?
Well. I don't think they're mutually exclusive, like. You're, you're showing the, I don't understand why we can't show the growth and show achievement. One's a number from September, another's a number from January. On on that chart, it would show what the achievement was in September and January. And it was show, I'm just saying, like, looking at that.
So one of the great things about MAP is it helps us cut the data in a lot of different ways. So we're actually in this presentation, we have three different ways to cut it. One is looking at, are they on grade level, uh, grade, grade levels, like the achievement, as you mentioned. One is on growth. So because at the start, so we, the goal is for every student to be on the, on the level, right? So that was the first thing we looked at. The second thing was the growth because some students start well below grade level. There are certain amounts of expected growth that we could have. What we historically have done is we have outperformed the expected growth um, for, for most of our student groups. And so when you look at that data too, to say, okay, we have a student in special ed, there are two grade levels below in reading. Did we meet the growth goal for that student? So that's another way of looking at it. And then third, we have the way of looking at it through star prediction. And so then we have the slides for star prediction as well to say, based on the state test, do we anticipate that they will get approaches or higher rates or higher? And so that's the reason, I know it's a lot of different slides. And then we also have different slides broken up by the difference.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. But I don't want to rush through anything, um, with everyone comfortable, our questions answered. I have one que. That we saw between the BOY and the MOY. And, um, how we're addressing it, what's happening? Those are our kids that should be excelling or losing them. Are we, are they getting lost?
Uh, I can speak to that. So one of the things at the campus level, as we, as the assistant superintendent, ensure that we identify the who those scholars are to make sure they're not getting lost. And then also evaluate the small group destruction or acceleration time that's happening for those scholars, so that we don't lose them.
These are probably our GT kids and everything. And, and their master level at the beginning of the year is dropping. So I want to see that trend go back up. What are we doing for them to make sure that they continue to stay at that master stuff?
And so we do have programs like the Zoom that also help our GT students push them to another level, but also making sure that we know those kids in classroom, that the teachers understand exactly what they need to push them higher.
President Durant, just one thing to add. As we're looking at each of these categories, I know through former assess, you know, old assessment models, we really look at just one bubble group of students, really looking at the students that are below grade level or the students that are on grade level. But now the way that we are approaching everything is looking at four bubble sets of students, ensuring that we all have what we call is a hopper and dropper report, and making sure that every one of our students are hopping into these tiers, so that they're showing exponential growth. So the students that are showing regression at the masters level would show that they are actually dropping a level. So then we have a very, we have a very, um, we, we then can laser likely focus and target them specifically with very prescribed interventions. But to your point, you know, when we look at gifted and talented students, it, that also, they're part of advanced academics, but it's also special service as well. So we also want to make sure that we're also challenging our students, and ensuring that they're also growing at an exponential rate, just like our students that are at approaches and below grade level. I want to give a lot of kudos, you know, to our instructional services department led by Dr. Mendoza, because that is something that they are focusing on, especially through targeted professional development. When we do academic learning walks together, we're specifically looking at how we are targeting that very, very prescribed small number of students, but every single student matters. And, and that is the, and that's the approach, is making sure that all of our kids are hopping, and they are growing exponentially through each of those respective levels.
Right, because the highest slides that we expected, they came in mastering, beginning of the year, we don't lose that.
Just wanted to add to your point that we can, we do see gains in each, at each grade level. Looking from approaches, BOY to approaches. At the middle of the year, we're pulling a lot of those students up, so that is a great sign, so it's definitely making a big effect.
Just to add to that, uh, to trust me, Grant's point, it's fourth through seventh grade. On reading and math on masters, and on math, it's sixth and seventh at the meets level. We're losing, again, real school, so. You know, if there's something that needs to be adjusted, because I always try to look at this through a lens on, if there's any impact we can make as a board, you know, is there, is, is there some other tool or resource or change or policy, you know, that could help address the things that the data identifies actionable opportunities? Slide 32? Any wrap-up questions from anybody? How about a big thank you to our area superintendent here through this with us?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I, no comment, just appreciation. I know this is really hard work, and I, I, I want them to know that we do appreciate the deep dive and everything that you're doing, because it is very difficult. So please don't take our questions as less than.
Because in summary, we're seeing, we're seeing gains, we're seeing good gains, we're seeing huge gains, we're right on target. Want to make sure we don't lose our gifted kids, but overall, I think we've done a good job.
I hope we'll echo all of that. Mixed in the middle of this data is significant recovery from what they were calling the COVID slide. See a lot of recovery from a severe drop-off a few years ago, so, uh, good work, but we will still press.
Thank you, Dr. Parisau and our area superintendent. For our next item, I'd like to recognize. Our chief, yeah, Dr. Parisau, still, still you. You're still up.
Thank you, President Durant. But we're taking down the prior presentations, so we put up the new one. So the next item is our TAPER report presentation. And TAPER stands for the Texas Academic Performance Report. It's released annually. You can find this item starting on page 77 of your binder. Then from pages 78 through 109, you'll find all the data tables. So we did anticipate, you might have some questions about those numbers in the presentation deck itself. And we did not put in the actual student count numbers for many of the areas. You'll see that for many of them, they are not provided within the TAPER report themselves. But we do have, you do have that raw data there as well, so it would have made some of the slides to be a little challenging to read. The actual presentation begins on page 110 of your binder.
Can we pause a minute on page 78? In our binders? And circle that B. Waited a long time to see a B on a TAPER report. So let's celebrate that just a moment here, all right?
And we will, and we will get a chance to celebrate it again as well in the deck itself.
All right, what did you say, go 100 and what?
Uh, 110, so on 110, you will see the presentation. So this is an annual report, as I mentioned, put out by the Texas Education Agency. What it does is it allows us to look at district data in comparison to the state as well as the region. Data is segregated in multiple ways, so we are able to look at our comparisons across those different areas by ethnicity, by genders, economically disadvantaged status, English language learners, special education, as well. So there is a public hearing tied to this, so we will bring the item up again in the next meeting for a public hearing. And so we will be covering those components of the report within the presentation today. This report was released on December 15th, right before Christmas break, and, and we put it together for today's presentation. So the first thing that we want to look at are the enrollment trends. So what you can see in this data comparison is three years, so we're on the far left, you see 2019 to 2020, 2020 to 21, and then 21, 22. So we're able to look across the years, and the first slide, we'll look just here at Spring ISD. This is a similar pattern that we will look at. We are on page, check, one. So this, it shows our data broken down by group. At the top, you can see our student groups, and then broken down by race and ethnicity below them. One thing that you'll notice is that, you know, we've had pre-statistic that are economically disadvantaged from 2019 to today. Same with English language learners, special education, we, and even the majority of our race and ethnicity breakdown. We have had a slight increase. But we look at the comparison to Region Four in Texas, so what we see here on this slide, and we, and we have similar color palettes throughout, so blue will be Spring ISD, orange will be Region Four, and then green will be Texas. So we have a larger percentage of economically disadvantaged students than we see at the region or even at the state level. Now, go through the slides, there's a lot of insights that can be pulled from them. So we'll, I'll go through the slides a little bit quicker, and then feel free to ask if there are any specific questions.
Interesting, is the, our special ed is actually pretty comparable across the state and the region.
Yeah, so our, our numbers are a little bit under, but very comparable, yes. Yeah, the state, yes. So when we look at the ethnic composition broken down between students and staff, so this is specifically looking at our teacher groups, the same color palette applies to spring and the blue, the Region Four in Texas. The boxes, the outline bars represent the student numbers within each of those areas, and then the filled-in bars represent the actual teacher percentages. So you can see that we, across the state, as well as region and Spring ISD, that Hispanic and white teachers are not represented between student groups. We're going to now take a look at our STAR and search through three in EOC. Just as a reminder, the state utilizes approaches, meets, and masters, and that's how it's broken down in the report as well, with approaches showing that students are likely to succeed with some intervention. And then with meets, also, they're highly likely to succeed with a little bit of targeted intervention in masters, is they are expected to succeed with a little or no intervention.
We have any questions so far?
Back when this was the, text.
And, and so, yes, the, that is the work that they have done, and a lot of the data analysis is looking at to ensure that those reading, especially reading and math, which are those federal requirements. Texas, we go beyond that, some of the other areas with the social studies and science. But yes, that is the goal, so that they are able to, to be successful in college as well as a career. Comparison to. All right, so that, so as we look in the STAR data, we're going to first look at participation. So again, you can see participation rates between Spring Region Four in Texas. You'll notice that there's no dot for that 2020 year, and that's because that was the year when the STAR test did not occur due to COVID. You'll also see a significant decline in 2020, 21. That was the year that it was, there wasn't a requirement to take the stock. So many families did not. Our data is very comparable to the region status. When we look at how our students succeeded, we're going to first look at approaches, and our student set approaches compared to the three areas. This is broken down by. You can see that from 2020 to 2022, we had increases across the board. Many of our increases are very aligned with the region's status, and some higher than, say, as far as 30%. Next, we'll look at the same data, but we're looking.
So the, 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 the students, we're here to go, we ended up at 69. And then we increased.
That's correct for approaches, grade level.
And we're, we're continuing to see increases.
That's correct.
Yeah, so you said we exceeded the state levels.
Yeah, so for example, let's figure out the first one there, you can see with our Asian demographics, we had a total increase in the approaches level, so looking at that continued growth cycle, right? So we were at 77% to 84%, and so that was an increase of 7%. However, at the state level, that same demographic only increased 3%. So we did more than double.
And you're just talking about percent increases.
Closing the gaps, yes ma'am.
I just want to point out that when you pick up into the ladies, you really don't have much room for growth.
And so when we look, and we look at the other, so we look at the next demographic is our white demographic, we can see that there was a 6% increase, and it's for ISD compared to the state, so it's only a 4%. So we're closing the gaps. And 9% for African-American students. And it was 18% for the state, we were outpace. We'll now take a note, well, look at the next slide, which looks at comparison between male and female students. We can see that our female students did outperform our male students and all students. And that is true in region as well as in state. Next, we'll look at the, the groups such as English language learners, economically disadvantaged students, and students in special ed. Again, we have significant increases from 2021 to 21, 22. And another thing I think that is important to point out is that that 2020 to 2021 was not all of our students. And so when, when you look at the performance and what we were able to close it up, you know, from our data analysis, it's actually larger than what we see at the data set.
And if I'm looking at this correctly, that, that same thing was hoping through, true, we went up 10%?
That is correct, yeah, for all, for all students.
Whereas the region didn't.
It's 6%.
It's six and the state is.
And I know we were just talking about special education, you can see there that special, special education increased by 8%, where the state was only 7%. The region was only 7%.
I've seen a consistent trend here, that the scope of our lines are steeper than state or region. Yeah, and so we're closing the gap.
Next, we're going to look at the same format, but with our meets on grade level. And you're going to see some similar trends. So again, our female students outperforming males. When we look by group, they have some very low groups, if you look, I, I know earlier we were speaking about our English language learners and our economically disadvantaged students, they had very large increases from 2021 to 21, 22. Very steep in points. As we move to the next group, looking at ethnicity and race. Similar patterns fits with our growth, growth across the board. And this is at the masters level. Looking at the masters level by male, female. Also growth. Very similar to the state as far as our. Looking at masters level by group. See increases across the board.
So up, so now it's steep for the masters.
That is true, yes. And I know that speaks to our prior presentation and what was shared by our students, who are teams of what they're doing to. To work and increase those achievement for our students who are already at grade level, moving them to masters, especially students who may be in our.
I know this is kind of how we get to grade and do our comparison. If you look at region four, it pretty much mirrors the state in most of the charts, so is there any benefit to finding other schools within region four?
And, and there are cohort groups, so we do have data that we look at like that through, especially with our, our principals. And the work that we do in comparison, one school, it's really strongest when you compare one school to another school, but there is some benefits as well with. With overall demographics for district, the taper report itself though is built. And you're, you're right on, and I think that that speaks so much to how much our district has done in closing the gaps for our kids. That we continue regardless of the, the groups of students we have, we are closing gaps and we're doing it at a rate that other districts aren't able to do. And it doesn't speak, because region four is such a mix of districts and demographics.
And if you go back to slide five eight, then. It is a comparison to the previous data and, and what trustee. Bray pointed out, our black students are much higher than the region and state. And when we saw that variance in how the stands were outperforming our blacks, we've got to really start to focus in and look at why. When we're looking at the data, we have to take, we're comparing it to region four in Texas, but we also have to include in that comparison that we're different.
Our next.
Just to emphasize, you're correct, our black student enrollment is much higher than the region and the state. We are at 38%, while the region is at 19 and the state is at 13. So we do have a larger black population in our, in our district. And that's where. Definitely lends this to look at. And I was thinking, I'm curious to see how our culturally relevant training will impact our data. So looking forward to seeing. She's not ahead.
No pressure, right? But no population is a homogeneous group. So I'm glad we can individuals.
Yeah. I think that's important also to think of for our accountability system is that it weighs everyone the same, there is some adjustment matrix. In domain two, but there, you know, a lot of the metrics do provide better ratings for districts based on. Their economically disadvantaged, if they have lower numbers, they, they perform better, and I think that that's something the state really needs to look at. Because you're not comparing apples to apples on the maps. Same resources are not available.
I have heard, so somebody can correct me that in making an adjustment to the accountability system. Is talking minimizing the impact of growth.
You are correct, and there's been a lot of feedback to the state on that. We, we have actually had members of our, of our district, our principals reached out to our representatives. T A still had that, they just closed the window for feedback on the accountability system, so there have been some adjustments to growth, but there's a lot of concern because of the unknown.
And I think the other piece to point out absolutely, you know, the last conference we had with the commissioner, you know, he's not willing to budge, but our advocacy. All of us will be, well, some of us will be here on the 21st, we really need to talk about that, because if you go back to slide nine. Dr. Paris thought, you know, the point being that we do have a larger black population, but I can tell you our teachers are pushing even harder the growth that you see. You know, in our black students are outperforming the growth that you see at the region and at the state level. And in the number of students that are scoring. At approaches are higher, our black students are growing much more. In this case, you'll see the 11 percentage points where at the region, they're at nine and at the state, they're growing at eight. So our black students, and that's what we're talking about, it's like, you can't just grow one year's time, we've got to push our kids a year and a half to two years. And you're seeing our teachers are doing this, we still have a ways to go to be where we need to be. But we're pushing that growth and that's why that domain two A and B is so critical for us that they can't. If it goes away, it will be, it will impact our accountability.
Alright, we will transition to the results from AP IV exams. So with this part with this page, this is slide 18. If you take a look at the top, you'll see the participation percentage for those grades 11, 12. At, across the top again, compared across year bands as well as across the region and the state. So we have had a decline in participation. And something that I know our advanced academics team have been heavily involved in as part of the strategic plan work in, in changing and getting more students. Involved in the AP exams as well as opportunities to, to practice and study for these things. So when we look at the actual scoring, so a, a score of three or higher is what's utilized by universities. To say that you, this is the college, college level in order to award credit for that specific class. And so you can see there that we did have declines from 2019 to 2021.
And that's the percentage that's scored here. We implemented a requirement to take the test though, right? Did that shy people away from participating?
I, I see Dr. Williams kind of smiling back there, it does, it does, it is, it is enhanced in a challenge. Because before they participated and they got the weighted points and what we said is you've got to sit for this test. And it has had a challenge in our participation and then of course, we're now re norming and getting our scores back up. And the students truly preparing for the exam, not just, you know, the, the report card grades, but truly sitting and preparing for the exam.
And so you can say, see that while we dropped 11% in three or higher. And we see those comparable drops at 10% for both the region and the state. And so that work that I know our advanced academics team, they're doing a staycations, AP staycations. And really helping our students, they're staying out there, they're studying, they're preparing, so we anticipate a, a transition and closing these gaps for next year's paper.
Yeah, because I wonder what, what's happening with the curriculum that they're not asking for. We're sitting at 14% in the state and regions, but. I don't know all through region four to state, but when I used to teach a course that she could go to the AP test. Other districts really had, like you said, camps where they actually studied and. Really had rigorous study, like a week or two to get prepared for these things. If you really want to play, you have to work at it. If they abandon athletics, you don't just do it by whatever you're going to class for, you can act and works on the side. Are those camps? Something we can incorporate or. You'd have to purchase.
Yeah, it's not something you send kids away for, it's, you know, in schools and you have to have teachers who are actually. Organizing them and teaching them. I know AP biology, there's a lot of, for the AP test, there's a set of classes you have to go through and you have to have the equipment for it. So.
I'm just, I've got the budget in mind, I'm thinking, can we do it in-house, there's something where I'm gonna have to.
We are actually doing a man house and funding for our GT program, we, we're good, okay, so they're doing that, thank you.
So the partition, participation rate is there. And even with the fewer number of students sitting for the exam. The percentage is going to be higher. That coming down, thinking about practically that translates to campus. Fewer AP students in the classroom. It seems to me like you can focus more.
The dates.
Okay, thank you.
And another. And I think another important point is that we've done a lot in the district to open up opportunities for dual credit. And our partnership with Loan Star, and so while participation in the AP exam may have dropped. We also have increased substantially dual credit, we have twice as many students taking dual credit courses this year than took last year. And so those, too many of those students were students that before may have taken the AP where, you know, now they can guarantee that they're going to get that.
And get the credit, yeah, yeah. They don't have to sit for the test and take, they can just take.
But I do know that Dr. Quayar and his team plan to, plan to have an update for you on our advanced academics.
Yes, for the March board meeting, we have an academic updates and we'll be hearing from the instructional services team led by Dr. Mendoza. Who will be giving the board an update on emergent bilingual as well as gifted and talented, so I'm really excited for March support.
Alright, so next we will take a look at SAT and ACT results. Makes another exciting slide, you can see that we have constantly outpaced region four in Texas and the percentage of students who take the ACT and ACT exam. The colors, you can see the blue lines are spring ISD, the orange are region four and the green is Texas, and so this is broken down, we're taking a look at it by race and ethnicity.
Not looking at scores, we're just looking at participation.
That is correct.
And I've always had a problem with having kids take tests that they have not been given the preparation for. I'll just state with that and briefly that. We don't have participation in the second day on Saturdays.
We do have prepar, prep courses, and we have a number of different ways. So there are actual sessions that students come to on, on the weekends, we have time built also after school. We have a support through Apex, helping students practice and take this kind of virtual SAT, ACT exams. And that, and that really has been something that we've got great feedback from our students, I mean, the support that that is as well as from our administrators. So speaking of performance, we'll take a look at performance next. Oh, I'm sorry, gender next and then performance. So here you can see participation by gender, same colors applies, spring, blue, region, orange and green. Next we'll look at our English language arts and writing by race and ethnicity. So here, we're not looking at region, that region and the state were almost the same percentages in order to try to give you a different way of looking at the data and providing. A comparison that was, that was easier to see, we, we kept it just state and. Sorry, spring ISD and state, so the green is Texas and the blue is spring ISD. And it's broken up by race, ethnicity, but also broken up by year. So as you look across the groups, you'll see the years and the performance across your.
It's closer for Hispanic and we're also, our demographics will have similar to the state.
That's correct, with overrepresentation for African Americans. You do see across, across the, the lines, very similar gaps. But smaller gaps, I think, is, is a celebration for what we see with our African American students, smaller gaps and scores and the same with our Hispanic students. Taking a look at gender. See some similar trends as we saw by race and ethnicity. Spring performing below the state. The next slide we will look at is mathematics, again, the data is broken up the same way.
This might be a separate. I'm just thinking about, would there be something to be. Saying.
And, and we do have a goal tied to college per military readiness already, and there are some GPMs, full progress measures underneath that primary goal that we are monitoring. And so that is something that we are working to address these gaps. And also we began monthly meetings with our principals reviewing the data at our heart high school level. Because each of these students, there's also this SAT and ACT scores contribute to CCMR for the campus, and so we're watching it very closely. I know we do have.
And we have black and Hispanic American scholars, right?
We do, yes.
Yes, Woods. Can you give us kind of an idea of what you have to score on this test to get that distinction?
But I can.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I can put that on the board of data. You'll see though with mathematics, similar as we saw with English language arts with a closer. A closer distinction, you know, there isn't a gap as large for African American students. When we look at mathematics by gender, it almost mirrors what we saw with the LA reading component. And across all of these, you will also see that the state as well has decreased over the last four years.
Trustee Jensen, I do have the answer for you, it does vary by state, I do know that Texas used to be. It does vary by state. I do know that Texas used to be at the average rate index of two nineteen. But just pulling it up, just to double check my thinking, Texas actually increased it to two twenty-one. So to be considered a national merit scholar, you have to score a two twenty-one actually on the assessment to be in that category.
So it's the ACT test, not the SAT?
Correct.
All right. Next, we will look at the advanced and dual credit course completion rates. You'll see that they have decreased across the district as well as region four and Texas. But spring ISD completion rates are now equal to those in region four. We are three percent off the same. So we're closing those gaps for advanced dual credit courses.
We partner with Lone Star. It goes to a correct course.
Yes, ma'am.
So I have a daughter who teaches one of those courses in another district and I can tell you these are not watered down courses at all. You're using one, Lone Star in the semester test and everything else. So this is real kudos to that district.
That's correct. The curriculum is college level curriculum that is implemented. We have some instructors that, Lone Star instructors that come here. Some students take courses online with Lone Star and some of our own teachers have been certified with Lone Star as dual credit teachers. So now we're going to look at graduates, another exciting element here. You'll see a list that shows the old graduation types. So there are some, the numbers keep getting smaller and smaller because that pool of students who fell under those under household five, you know, have kind of matriculated out. That was back in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. So the majority of those students at this point have received their degree or equivalents. And however, when you look at our growth, going from twenty eighteen all the way to twenty twenty, you see a massive increase in our foundation of distinguished level of achievement. And that is the highest level offered by TDA for diploma. It requires that you have the kind of the old four by four model where you have four years with science, four years of math. In addition, you must have an endorsement. And so that the requirements are very high. But we continue to push that as the expectation for all students and our data reflects that growth. So while you see, oh, it's dropped for foundation, that's a good thing because we're moving and also for foundational endorsement because we're moving to distinguished level of achievement. Next, we're gonna look at that comparison by the region Texas. And we'll see that we outpace all the region and the state. Eighty-six percent of our students graduated with a foundation. Only eighty percent in Texas and only seventy-eight percent of the region. So we'll now look at four-year longitudinal graduation rate. So in the taper report, they look at four-year, five-year and six-year utilizing a cohort model. And so this looks at the graduation rates broken down by the student groups as well as race and ethnicity. And we do have the. And all of this spring ISD comparison in twenty nineteen. You can see special education has increased by five percent since twenty nineteen. All right, now we're gonna look at the comparison based on region four, Texas. We are aligned for our economically disadvantaged student group. Slightly lower than the other districts. The greatest gap which are maybe we can. Next, we'll look at longitudinal dropout rates. And then you might be thinking, well, if we look at graduation rates, one of that would be the inverse. But there are other components that are included or that are removed from dropout rates. So while they may not have graduated within the four years, there's also the opportunity for a high school equivalent such as the GED that would then not have students included in the dropout rate. They complete their high school equivalent rate. So dropout rates tend to be lower than, than the difference between the graduation rate. So you can see this is again just spring over the last three years. We've made some significant progress in lowering the dropout rates for English learners. We were at thirty-three percent in twenty nineteen dropout and now we're only at twenty-one percent. You look at our Pacific Islander group was at fifty-four percent dropout rate and it was dropped to fourteen percent. Their celebrations here as well. No, it is a smaller demographic group. So the number of the student numbers themselves do count more in the percentiles overall. You can see the actual, the actual data tables are in your deck as well. So if you want to go back later and take a look at.
If we look at all students.
Yes, our dropout rate, yes. We went from twelve percent down to ten percent. I think one point to note was that COVID year of twenty twenty. So there was, there was a decrease there, which was, I think, pretty phenomenal considering what we went through and what our students went through. During that crisis and what's happened, we still dropped. Now we look at a comparison of the three-year dropout rate from spring to region four in Texas. Here we see our Native American students. About half a pretty high number, thirty-two percent compared to eleven percent, eight percent. Again, those smaller numbers make an impact. All right, now we're gonna move into graduates and Texas and higher education. So, so what you'll see is that comparison between spring region and Texas, again, over three-year spans. The table on the left shows students who enrolled in higher education, so a university or could have been a two-year or a four-year university. So what we see there is again, Texas at forty-six percent, we are under that Texas as well as the, as well as the region. Well, we look at completed one-year Texas higher education out of developmental force. There is no data yet for this year. So it wasn't included in the taper report. However, that report should be really short. We'll have that data. Another area of celebration is looking at our staff. So you'll see on staff broken up here from different groups. So you'll see that it's for an ISD, forty-four percent of our staff are teachers. It is lower than the region or Texas, but remember, these are overall percentages of our staff. Because in spring, we, we have so many positions to help support our teachers. That also incorporates that, that auxiliary staff as well as the professional support that they receive is higher than both the region and the state. And so while the overall percentage of teachers as a whole hundred percent is lower, it's because of the importance that we put on, on that support for our teachers. We also see that our campus admin is pretty close to an alignment of the region, state. Our central admin is lower than both the region and the state level. So we help ensure that the support and the finances go to the campuses and directly to our students and our teachers. When we look at teaching staff by highest degree health, we can see that we have a very large percent compared to the region as well as Texas of teachers with master's degrees. So our bachelor number is lower, but that's because we have so many that have master's degrees and as well as doctorates. So across the whole state, teacher, teaching staff at thirty point eight. And we have one point five percent, we have almost twice as many teachers with doctorates than we see in the state level. When you look at that no degree level, it seems a little high. I think the, there's a couple of things we want to point out. One is the importance that we and significance we put in our CTE programs on having individuals who have a background in the pathways that they have. Having a degree and having the actual job experiences makes, makes a big difference. And so we do have a number of CTE teachers who do not have a degree, but they have fifteen, twenty years in their professions. And as they're providing instruction to students, they're able to really connect those career skills to what the students need to be successful later. And so our DOI, District of Innovation, thing allows us to certify those individuals as teachers.
So that's four point three percent of our.
It is not, CT is a large percent. The other half, and I was about to speak to this, was this data, remember, is cradle data. So this was also during last year where we had the staffing challenges that we had where we utilized interim teachers to fill in, to help ensure that our, our students had instruction. And so those interim teachers do count into that percentage. So it is a blend of both situations that contribute the majority to that. I will say that, you know, across the, across the region and the state, you're comparing lots of different districts, kind of like we talked about earlier. Where in our specific area, there's a lot of competition for teachers. And so that, you know, that's one thing that there was struggle. You know, I, I think that it'd be good to possibly look at like our neighbors such as Alden and be able to take a look. And that's something that I can look at, will some data and how they compare it on this.
That's, that's a significant difference. So I'd love to know why it's so different.
And again.
I mean, the challenges that we have here in the region and across the state with finding.
And I think the exciting thing is also the work that we've been able to do. We're gonna see some salary data. And we know that all those incentives that the board provides to our teachers for retention. We were able to fill the vacancies. We've talked to a lot of districts in our surrounding areas that, for us, it hit us hard last year. But when you look at where we are now, we didn't have the large vacancies this year because of the changes that we paid and the incentives that were provided. We were able to start with just about, you know, the majority of all of our classrooms, I think, special education. And I will continue to see the struggle, but we were able to fill many more vacancies than, than the part from surrounding districts.
So I just want to be clear that as, as we look at where we're. What causes, right? And so if it is the case that a larger, necessary percentage of our teachers aren't ready in terms of traffic because they have to read or for whatever reason. But we need to identify. That number like that. That seems a pretty big number.
And I, I think the CTE thing is, is, is the great, is the, the positive to look for. That while other districts may have had the same staffing which contributed to a percentage, our CTE teachers that were recruiting to teach those programs or help.
I talk to board members from across the region. They are CTE, they are professionals too. So that, that just doesn't.
We'll go ahead and we'll take a look at some of the districts around us and provide some comparison data in the board update.
I know you probably don't want to hear another story when I was doing professional development at Rice. Our teachers had award-winning, nationally award-winning teams in engineering. She didn't have a degree. And he changed, he came out with policy that all the teachers that had degrees and they just lost the most incredible coach that had moved to driving. So I, you know, realize it can go both ways.
And there are some. So I, I looked at the raw data and we was able to take a look and there are coaches on there. There are, you know, one of them's a cheerleading coach. So we have different, different positions that are included in that beyond CTE as well.
We just finished talking about the advantage. So even degrees.
Do you want a bachelor stipend person who doesn't know much about cooking or do you want a master chef?
Right, I'm not.
Yeah. Do you want somebody who has had engineering courses that doesn't know how to fix his car to teach child motor repair? Or you want somebody who actually does it? I, I think there's different kinds and that we need to honor the years of expertise in the field, what they teach.
Right. And we're looking at data and Amy has an award-winning CTE program and all of them. Like that, like that's not unique to us. And what we're looking at here is a comparison of districts in our region and what the education levels are. But everybody's got CTE programs and everybody's hiring professionals to staff their CTE program. That, that, it isn't that they've taken up all the ones with degrees. So I just, you know, like.
So I think, as Chris all said, you will provide us a breakdown on that four point three percent in the board update. And then let's have an informed discussion when we get that data.
We are able to, these, this is publicly available data on TA's website. And so we are able to pull from the surrounding.
And districts that have like programs and demographics.
Yes, ma'am. All right. So now we're gonna look at teaching staff by years of experience. We can see that as, as we've discussed before, we do have a higher percentage of teachers who are beginning teachers or have five years or less in the field. And, and our number is sort of significantly higher than the region as well as the state. When you look at our teachers in the eleven to twenty range, we're pretty close within those percentages. But we continue to struggle on the lower end. Next, we're gonna look at salaries. Here's another positive data point. So if you look at spring ISD, we are higher in every single area for the average salaries for our teaching staff than the region and the state. The only exception is beginning teachers. The region just barely got in over us. But we were higher than the state as well. So our teachers, and I know this has made a huge impact in recruitment to be able to fill this rate. So we covered a lot of data today. So presented to, in this. So presented to, in this, that we, we also are going to speak to accreditation status. We are accredited. We are going to take a look now at what teams identifies by our criminal incidents according to the discipline codes. And then the financial standards report. We did already provide to the board the campus performance objectives, the campus improvement plans in the prior public care. So for our accountability rating, here's we, that opportunity to celebrate again, we are a B district. When you look at special education determination status, it does say needs assistance. But want to point out a couple of things. One is the taper report is the twenty one, or I'm sorry, twenty twenty one data. From where they pulled that from for this specific item is for, from the RDA report for twenty twenty two. That data is trend data, so it doesn't count twenty one. It doesn't, it's not the data from twenty one, twenty two for where we were found needs assistance. It was actually from the year before. So we're talking about two-year-old data and it is tied to discipline. So what we were, what we're identified as needing assistance in was disproportionality in special education for students who are African-American, where we saw that their rates of discipline were higher than the overall district percentages. And so I know that Dr. Teresa Edwards is here. And she has been working a lot with the campuses in partnership with Dr. Lebo. And they've been monitoring the data. From her review of the data, next year's report, this will no longer be listed as needs assistance, because all of that data is behind. So next year's data will be a year old data from now. And there were almost three hundred districts, there's two hundred eighty-four districts in the state of Texas that did carry this. Well, over a thousand districts. For accreditation status, we are accredited. And now kudos to Ms. Westbrook's and her team for our first rating that we have superior achievement by mutually. We're going to look finally at the discipline data. So what you'll see here, we have four slides, I believe. And of these four slides, it's broken down by teams code, which is how it's reported in our system to the state. So for whenever there are incidences on our campus, they are coded based on the type of incident that occurs. And they are entered in. And so that's where this data report generates from. You're going to see two data points. So all the way on the right, you'll see it says twenty twenty through twenty twenty one. There's a total count of the incidents and then that percentage. Then the percentage is the percentage of the whole, the hundred percent. So you can see for teams code four, which was possession or under the influence, there was fifty-two cases in twenty twenty one, which was three point eight percent. Now, when you look at the next column over, it's twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. The number is higher, but the overall percentage is only two point one percent. You're going to see a lot of increases in numbers from twenty twenty to twenty twenty two. Remember, that was also us coming back from COVID. Over half of the year in high school, most of our students remained virtual. And so we were still transitioning back into school. And so that's why the number of total counts decreased significantly. I think it's the more valuable piece of the data is to look at the percentage of the whole. And so in a lot of areas, we do see decreases in comparison. And the numbers were very low in twenty twenty. So moving to the next slide, you can see that our highest percentage across, across all the slides is team's code twenty one, which is just a violation of student code contact. And so that was a large increase and it's eighty percent, so about a five percent increase. Look, moving to the next slide after that. You'll see, you know, one of the, the, a decrease in fighting and mutual combat.
Yeah, a couple of examples of twenty one.
So there, this is a code that captures incidences that aren't in those other codes. So those other codes, as you see, are more serious incidents. And so this is a code that has been used by campuses to cover a number of things. And I know that, that some of these are also discretionary items that we've really been talking about with principals. So Dr. Lebo is up here. Did you want to come forward and speak to the discipline incidents?
First off, it was heights, but. Forty-one. Well, my question is, is the unit.
So an example would be things like tardies, truancy, those kind of things are captured by code twenty one. So that gets a catch-all for anything that's not twenty one. So that's going to be your most prominent one that's. Horse playing, things like that, that aren't major ones, that would be also.
Defiance of authority.
Fight would not be. No defiance of authority. Is another one that I know we've captured a lot and it's something that our cultural training and also will, has helped. And we already see in the data is showing you to reduce those numbers. Or disrespect to staff is another one that often gets, gets pulled into this number.
So forgive my ignorance. What do we use this data for?
What do we use with the state?
The state, the state.
The state, well, it's just to basically capture and be able to tell you this, this is how your district is doing with the state.
This is the state, but how we're choosing to code what in our district, I think, is a flex. That's kind of where I was going. What's the worst with coding versus the least? It's the fight of authority versus the party.
That, that's the catch-all that we have in the twenty one. I know that on here for the state, that we have some subcodes that can dig down to the data further. Up to that twenty one.
What is reason code thirty-three, thirty-four?
Not all codes, so there are numbers that are skipped. And there are codes that have been used in the past that are no longer used. And so the numbers, they're not codes that in order, so there are skip codes.
It says here, the code twenty one, it's parent federal, it says it does not include student code contact. But the reason for thirty-three and thirty-four.
See, I can double check that, I don't have that stuff.
It was particularly bad under that.
Sorry, the, the codes correctly.
Okay, okay, you say, you say that everybody's. I can't tell you that we've done a lot of work on the coding. And that code twenty, twenty-one is the catch-all. And it can go from not wearing your badge to talk back to a teacher, right? So all of that is the catch-all. Coding is something that we've been working with, not only our representatives or the liaisons that meet with Dr. Olivo on a monthly basis, but also with the campus level. We do keep a track of this reporting. It is one of the reports that we have running by school and every assistant superintendent monitors them. Dr. Olivo monitors them, the liaisons come in. And then we do have conversations because there are some schools that may be suspending more students. And so the discussions are had and it may be that there's higher activity there and it's okay. But if you have outliers, why? Either the over disciplining or when you're not disciplined at all, yet we have, you know, concerns that are brought to us. So that is the monitor. And I do believe we've made huge gains in the, the coding and what falls within each one. But I'm also very intrigued with Mr. Adams. I know the team did not put, if it didn't have a number, we, you know, wondered what should we do? But we did put those that had zeros here, so I'm wondering why thirty-three and thirty-four not there? But Dr. Olivo will review and will definitely.
I believe that may be an old parent federal side. I pulled up the teams codes. There is no longer currently, it looks like a thirty-three and thirty-four. But back in fifteen sixteen and prior, thirty-three was going to, would have been possessed, purchased, reused or accepted as a cigarette or tobacco product. I believe cigarettes and tobacco and E six now are included under twenty-one. Thirty-four was school-related gang violence, which I believe has been sort of encompassed by some of the other penal code provisions. And so it looks like those were removed from the teams discipline codes. And of course, we're not coding.
And board, just one thing else I want to add to, going back to the question specifically about, you know, what are some of the, you know, what are some of the strategies that we are utilizing to address some of the discipline in our schools? And I just, again, want to just champion, you know, the work that Dr. Mendoza has done, but also specifically around the part of the equity work and part of the professional development and training that she is pushing out to our leaders and our teachers. You know, also includes our culturally responsive discipline and how we are also addressing, you know, various discipline in the classroom, but also how we're able to implement culture responsive strategies to be able to mitigate some of these issues. I just want to say that Dr. Mendoza has done an incredible job so far. It's still a work in progress, but we continue to push in and continue to train all of our educators in our schools.
I think it's a bit, I mean, talk about culture and wanting to improve upon it. I think this is a good way to measure and analyze some actionable opportunity.
Might have been, because twenty twenty-one is such a weird year, might have been worthwhile to go back and get. Just so we have some.
And I'd, I'd like to look at the comparison of, you know. I was worried about the honesty on the reporting here. Sorry, but. I mean, work with two districts, I can tell you just spontaneous conversations. I don't think everybody reports what happens.
I could make a note to for the twenty nineteen twenty comparison. It is not part of the taper report, so we, we present it based on. And that concludes the presentation.
We're talking about class size. Page one of six. One thing that stood out to me is the class size. It almost doubles. The third, fourth and fifth grade have a real large class size. So we've got these kids that are maybe struggling to learn. We know that class sizes haven't been learned. So if these kids aren't learning a lot as much as they normally would in small class size, and now all of a sudden they get into middle school and teach small class size. I wonder what the impact.
And so, and I can speak to that, that is all class sizes. And so when we have the elementary school, and what some of our schools call lamp, is when they go through the different electives, like for PE, for example, they will have like all pre-K kids and the campus in the same PE class. And so that counts. When you see that big number, that's because of those large elective periods, like physical education where the kids are coming in. And so it averages from the small numbers all the way to the largest numbers. And that, that impacts the, the number overall.
So as we were kind of going through, I went back to the, to the paper reports all the way back to twenty twelve. And the class sizes from twelve, thirteen, fourteen, we're roughly around the same. Now averaging from second grade all the way to sixth grade, we're averaging around twenty, twenty-three kids per class. But when we get to twenty seventeen, it jumps considerably. And so seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. Third, fourth and fifth grade, those classes have been huge. And so I think that's what we can look at to see how that's affecting our dynamics. Because you're, for three years, you're learning in a really large classroom, maybe not getting everything you need. And now you get into sixth grade, middle school, it's a whole different environment in your time. And so I would love somebody to talk about. And will they not calculate the PE classes and everything in the other grade?
They are, they are calculated into the other grades. There's also, for your multi-year comparison, I can also say that we, we had done some new master scheduling practices with elementary that were not in place to help better align actual schedule on the campus to what was represented in the school. And so when you look at that comparison back from prior years, that's about the same time that we started master scheduling to the East School truly represented the class sizes that were there. Regarding, I, I can say that the average class sizes are not forty-five in grade five. And I know Ms. Westbrook's is, is ready to share as well. This was also during a period where something that could lead to some of the larger class sizes is also the, the staff, where we did work to combine some classes in order to ensure instruction to gaps in faculty.
And the difference, Dr. Parasol, is that we are self-contained in the K two and in third grade, third, fourth and fifth grade, they're departmentalized. And so it has so much to do how you're coding it. And so, you know, you and I may be team teaching. You have your twenty-two, I have my twenty-two because I'm the reading feature. It shows me having all forty-four. And then you're the math teacher and it shows you having all forty-four because you're the teacher record for that math. And we want to attribute the grades and the students to you, but it is on how we are scheduled. Third, fourth and fifth grade is departmentalized. So when you look at the numbers, we're always like, oh, my goodness, why is it so high? But it is how we are scheduled. We actually just pulled this data two days ago, I think, right before the, the meeting. And our numbers are nowhere close. They are more in line with the eighteen, nineteen that you see in the lower grades. But it is how they're coding and how the departmentalization happens in third and fifth, while it does, is not, we actually stopped that practice of departmentalizing in the lower grades because the students really need to connect to a teacher. They're too little to be switching in the lower grades, in the pre-K group. But we'll definitely take a look because we just had Dr. Parasol's team pull that. We're, you know, getting ready for next year. And so that's part of the conversation as we start doing projections for the coming school year. Yeah, I, yeah, I would definitely like to see some more information around. I, I do remember my oldest son, he was in middle school. He was in health class with fifty-two students. That, so I know we've had large class sizes and I know it's a different, the timing of. Just to make sure.
I'm just curious and maybe it can be a, insane discussion, but looking at social studies. I know it's not a core subject on page eighty-three. And it's not tested until eighth grade. So if you don't prioritize social studies and then they get to eighth grade, it's significantly lower than all the other, every other test. And significantly lower than the state and the region. And so, you know, just, you know, what, what, what can we do with social studies? Because I know it tends to get put on the back burner, but it's important, it's important by how we look at the world, how we understand people and other cultures going along with how we've been talking about. how we've been talking about culturally relevant and culturally responsive uh instruction uh in teaching. So I would just like to hear more about what we're doing with social studies.
I agree. Justin McDaniel, social studies is a huge focus of ours. Um, we are looking at social studies and science heavily. Currently, the elementary grades we're looking at, we have social studies weekly, a couple of other supplemental resources that we utilize. Um, but we also are looking at potentially um looking at diving into some new resources, particularly possibly a new curriculum that um we're looking at called Active Classroom. Um, and that's particularly for secondary that we are looking at for eighth grade as well as high school. Um, Active Classroom is deeply rooted in in a lot of those. A lot of the, a lot of the the teaks that are focused on heavily in secondary history and um and social studies. And so it also is being utilized from from different districts around the area as well. Um, I know Humboldt, Klein, I S D, Aldine, Houston, I S D are utilizing this resource that actually has yielded some very positive results. Um, it's very hands-on. It's also digital. Um, and it's project-based as well. Um, so right now we actually met um with the um the organization uh about a week and a half ago. And we're looking to actually pilot it, pilot in our U S history as well as our eighth grade classrooms. Um, and so more to come. I do know social studies is a little tricky as well, just because it continues to change, especially in the state of Texas, as we get closer to having a potential curriculum or a textbook. And then it all of a sudden, you know, shifts again because it goes through all the different cycles it's been going through. And we know um the whole debate around social studies, especially all the literary texts that are used. It's unfortunate because it hurts kids. Um, but we do have some resources that we feel very strongly about, um, that we will um be moving into, and so more to come.
So just to add on to that, are we considering anything for pre-grade through seven? Because you mentioned eighth grade and high school, but that gives a star in eighth grade.
Um, they do, and we're, we're always constantly looking at social studies curriculum that we have. I do know that um we did meet with the elementary team several weeks ago to review what we currently do have. Social Studies Weekly, which is what we're utilizing for early, early childhood through fifth grade. Um, I do know, um, as we're getting feedback, um, there is an opportunity for potentially a shift. Um, I I know that I've been getting a lot more feedback from our secondary teachers that there is an absolute immediate need for us to move um in a, in a new direction. So, but I I agree.
I'm going to see any other questions. We are running behind, you have a long night because I need a thousand objections. You guys want to take a break? Well, we'll take a quick two minutes break.
We're now reconvening the meeting at ten oh five P M. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Human Resource Sources and Human Capital Accountability. Julia.
President Durant, uh, Dr. Hill is not feeling well. Her voice, she has lost her voice. So she asked me to speak on her behalf. Um, for this item, um, is an update on the teacher effectiveness and retention recruitment incentive. And I'd like to um recognize and invite to the front podium, um, Dr. Christian Nguyen. She is our Executive Director of Performance Management, who will be providing us the update.
Good evening and greetings to Board President Justine Durant and to our other esteemed board members. To Superintendent Dr. Hina Hosa and the Senior Leadership Team, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you an update on the district's retention and recruitment incentive. I'm Dr. Christian Nguyen, the Executive Director of Performance Management in the Office of Human Resources and Human Capital Accountability. I'd like to take this opportunity to review the district's what are strategic priorities. In the summer of twenty twenty-one, our Board of Trustees committed to six priorities that will guide us in our ongoing focused endeavors. These priorities include student outcomes, opportunities, leadership, well-being, engagement and equity. These are the cornerstones that guide everything we do as a district, the daily interactions with our students, staff and our community. Our North Star goal keeps us centered on our Y in Spring ISD, which is to ensure excellent and equitable outcomes for all students in our district. We aim to achieve these two goals by the end of the twenty twenty-seven school year. We espouse to increase the percentage of students in A B schools from twenty-seven percent to fifty percent and to decrease the percentage of students in D F schools from forty-six percent to zero. We also aim to increase the number of A B schools from twelve to nineteen and decrease the number of schools that score D and F from sixteen to zero. The teacher effectiveness, retention and recruitment incentive falls under the leadership priority in our strategic plan. We believe this strategy directly supports our commitment to recruit, retain and reward top talent and exemplary efforts in our district. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide you with updates and proposed next steps as it relates to the twenty twenty-two teacher effectiveness incentive. The teacher effectiveness incentive is a retention and recruitment incentive pay plan that's presented here before you on the screen. It is comprised of two major components, which are recruitment and retention. The primary distinction from any other performance pay plan in Spring ISD is that the teacher effectiveness incentive is solely designed to reward teachers, specifically to recruit and retain experienced teachers in the classroom and to reward them for their exemplary instruction to students as demonstrated by the percentage of students who met the star grade level standard or progress measure in addition to their T-test summative evaluation rating of proficient or higher. This incentive plan values teacher experience and therefore the final award amount is differentiated by years of experience. Now let's take a look at the key events leading up to the implementation of the teacher effectiveness incentive plan. First, as you may recall, all pre-K through twelve public school systems across the country faced challenges of the national teacher shortage, which worsened during the pandemic and severely impacted us as a district. Simply stated, there was a major shortage of classroom teachers in the twenty-one twenty-two school year. Just over a year ago, the board was informed that one hundred and ninety-seven teachers had left the district and two hundred and seventy-five vacancies had yet to be filled. Additionally, the Board of Trustees learned that this issue extended beyond our classrooms and departments also struggled with recruitment and retention. In June twenty twenty-two, we boldly authorized the district leaders to implement a robust teacher recruitment and retention plan. Two main recruitment and retention strategies were approved at that time in June. Two one thousand dollar retention incentives were paid to returning employees with the first disbursement paid out in August and the second payment was dispersed just last month on the January tenth paycheck. This employee retention incentive totaled to seven point eight million dollars to all returning employees. In addition to the two thousand dollar monetary incentive, all new and returning employees earned two wellness days, which will provide it to each employee to use at his or her discretion throughout the year as encouragement to protect one's mental and emotional well-being. It is imperative that I reemphasize the target group of the teacher effectiveness incentive. Again, this incentive plan was designed solely to reward teachers, specifically to recruit and retain experienced teachers in our Spring ISD classrooms and to reward them for their exemplary instruction to our students. Again, this was evidenced by the percentage of students who met with a star grade level standard or progress measure in addition to their T-test summative evaluation rating of proficient or higher. This incentive plan values teacher experience and the final award is differentiated by years of experience. This past October marked our first payout period in which we awarded sixteen percent of our total teacher workforce with the teacher effectiveness incentive. These awards to three hundred and sixty-six teachers totaled to more than one point five million dollars. As a result of this first year of implementation, we identified gaps that we plan to address. These include being more explicit and clear in how we define the term teacher. As you are aware, there are several roles on our campuses that are involved in our scholars' schooling. And we learned that we must list the positions and specific job titles within our eligibility requirements. Additionally, three groups of teachers should receive the incentive. Teachers whose students take STAR Alt two regardless of class size as well as science and social studies teachers if their students meet the criteria as demonstrated on STAR Alt two, STAR and end-of-force exams. Lastly, to publicly and transparently define the eligibility limits based on the data analysis methodology, including the minimum number of students tested and the testing data thresholds and any other parameters. The administration recommends the following proposed resolutions to address these identified gaps. Science and social studies teachers who's who meet the student performance criteria with STAR E O C achievement results and T-test appraisal requirements receive the teacher retention incentive. Teachers with STAR E O C or STAR Alt two students receive the incentive pay regardless of class size. The previous award payment total has been finalized. Based on our review of the student achievement data, we anticipate additional payments of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars to approximately fifty teachers. These payouts will be issued to these additional staff on the March tenth paycheck. And lastly, all proposed resolutions have been vetted by the research and accountability and finance teams. And therefore, the budget has been closely reviewed for funds to allow for these recommendations. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your attention and for this opportunity to present this update to you tonight. Thank you.
The total dollar amount is that two hundred and thirty?
Two hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Push up a little bit from what we see in our binder. And I I I do want to make a comment on that because we used to have five, six and seven folders when we got here. And um Dr. H has done a really good job in reducing that. But they did their best to give data to us to call a binder and we get some opportunity to review them. But as they double check that before the board meeting, we have to, we have to put some race around that. A question? I want, I have a comment. I know we heard from a couple of teachers, even the the one that was on the bond committee with us, that she only had four students, so she didn't qualify for it. So um I like that we're, we're proposing that we adjust it to all of the teachers regardless of the sign. Um, you guys know, we actually had a teacher that came and addressed us uh that public participation about clarifying. And so this is um, this item actually came forward as a request from Justice Correa and Justice Harris to to relook at it and um come back with some recommendations on how we could respond to some of the concerns we've been hearing. And so this is a recommendation from the district. Your comments are never included. Or those who choose to. I think this is a wonderful beginning to try to compensate really effective teachers for the professionalism and their hard work and the wonderful effect they have in the classroom of students. We know nothing is perfect. And I said, and I love the two, uh, at the redefine teacher here and 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 around and I'm sure we will probably do more iterations with this in the future. But this is just a wonderful second version of the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you for working on. So thank you for this presentation and working on my stuff. We have known several districts throughout the state that have had uh incentive retention plans for teachers. They were quite a while. Specifically, I think all of us saw the Longview ISB presentation that was very popular in the state. So now to say that we have one that we are proud of recognizing our teachers for it's going to make us proud. So thank you. Thank you. If you can share this with others.
And another challenge from Ms. Westbrook, because I really think it's been part of our norm as we continue to address the crisis of the teacher shortages and, you know, folks just not going into teaching any longer. As we learn better ways in which to compensate them, we learn as we go along, right?
Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you for staying in the courts with us tonight. I had a question. So we know that there was an issue with how the pay. Have we resolved that? And do we anticipate any issues or concerns? Have we worked out those glitches? With the the pay actually being put on the payroll checks?
I know, and Ms. Westbrook's going to speak to this. I know we have a, um, can you go back on that slide? I know after we verified the numbers, we have the correct uh amount of teachers and the amount of B K. And um finance and H R have worked together to have a date of March two to address these teachers that were not included in the first one.
And what this has given us an opportunity to do is to go back through the entire process, bring the reconciliation, and it's, it's basically turned into an internal, I know this real says not to use the word audit, but it's given us the opportunity to just kind of audit everything. So any, any adjustments that need to be made through that process, anything that we have found, then we'll make sure that it's on the March tenth paycheck as well.
It seemed to me that there was a misunderstanding of who qualified. So it seemed like you fixed that. A clearly defined teacher and class size and all that. But there, it seems like there was communication issues with the way we both put out. Want to make sure that we have corrected those. And so people had misapprehensions about whether they qualified or how you they qualified. And so folks had expectations that we weren't meeting. And so, yeah, I, it seems like there's some lessons learned here uh going forward. I want to thank Mr. Hernandez for coming forward and helping me express the concern and encourage our community to avail themselves of public comment. Just said that to watch the justice. When you have needs, the way you get it. When you have needs, the way you get it to the board isn't by writing us an email, it's by coming to the board and expressing, here's where we need to grow, these are the needs that I see as a person that's on the front line. So my thanks, Mr. Hernandez, for coming forward.
They'd want to, just because we're on the topic and we're talking through this, I did want to make sure to note that this particular program, the Effectiveness Improvement and Retention Incentive, was funded through the SRTU fund, which is a funding source that expires on, in September of 2023. Yes. So I just wanted to make sure I made that note as we were discussing. Thanks. As Lassette said, it's a big challenge to continue something like this, so we're going to have to figure it out, right? Okay. Thank you. It's late. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't know if we want to, I don't want this to necessarily go on the consent agenda. I'd like it to be an item on Tuesday, because we have to vote on this one.
So, Mr. Vinkley, it won't go on the consent, and we will also make a change on that one slide, Dr. Win, to make sure, I know last night you were still auditing all the numbers, so we'll change that one slide out to reflect the current, the accurate number that we are paying out, that one slide. We'll have it ready for you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Teal, and your support over there. Our next item, I'd like to recognize our chief of innovation, Ms. Correa.
Thank you, President. For this, an item is an affiliation agreement or memorandum of understanding with UT Health Houston and Spring ISD. One thing that I would like to also recognize, who I know is here tonight, is Ms. Cynthia Williams with our CTE department. She continues to grow and reach out to partners to expand the internship opportunities that are available to our students. We currently have hundreds of partners, and every month, I think for the last six months, I think I brought you a new partner, and that speaks to the work her and her team are doing to ensure that we're giving kids real-life experiences with these partners. And so just wanted to recognize.
I like to say, I brag about it all the time, and I know other districts have CTE programs, but I think ours is top-notch in what we offer this year, and so I want to echo that kudo for this one as well.
I just want to point out one thing for the governance committee on page 168. The third item down, Spring ISD will provide transportation if possible for the basic learning experience. Students will be allowed to apply to internships for this, as I was saying, policy. I just want to, I'm not making that policy. Thank you.
And so with this MOU, like those in the past, you'll see a lot of the same elements. This one is with UT Health. It's specifically starting with psychology and counseling pathway, how, at Spring High School, however, the partner will actually support all of our campuses. You mentioned the transportation, and that is also something that we do provide for our students in all pathways. Are there any questions on this MOU?
Thank you, Dr. Correa.
I believe I have one more.
Next one's yours, too, isn't it?
Starting on page 170, you will see an MOU with Texas A&amp;M University and what is called Project E-Best. So this came about as a partnership with the university, and as Dr. Hinahosa and in my role now, when she was in this role, she worked closely with Dana, really sharing the struggle and the challenges that we have had in recruiting bilingual teachers and the need to be able to provide effective support to them and training for the state certification exams. So we have excellent educators who have a background and they're bilingual, but oftentimes when they go to take these tests, because of the way that the tests are designed, they have not been as successful as we would have liked to see. And we know that for some, that the frustration ends up with them leaving the field of education. Because of that request and that partnership, they have developed this professional development series and came to us first as the partner. And so this is actually work that is a combined team effort between school leadership, HR, academics, and then workforce development. And so what the program will do is it will allow for 60 hours of coursework, and it's online, it's free to all of our teachers to help them get a note certifications. Also, it will reimburse them for the actual exam fees, and then for, it will provide tablets or headsets for them as well as they work to prepare for the courses. And all three different exam, Texas exam, teacher certification exams are included, whether that be ESL or whatever.
I'm really impressed that it's free charge and there's alternate ways to access this information. My own, we don't want to make here, is that they both pay, one maybe, research component? But it's like, you know, research, we're doing almost traditional, it's a little control group. So teachers, people, they just want to know why the teachers are, and they can be random.
That is correct. So all of them will have access to the coursework. However, some will get coursework plus mentorship. So what they're looking at is, does that extra mentoring make a difference as the final efforts? And so that is part of it, and then it will randomly assign. All participants will volunteer, so that it does follow all the IRB requirements, like the research study, so they choose to participate.
That's requiring that one, there's human subjects, so just wanted everybody to be aware of that. On the next page is the observation protocol. I have this, this, I think it's, but it's a lot of, this is, it's lots of regions that you do to change. Yes, ma'am. It does, and that was one, and you can tell that it was developed, it's been developed for, back in 1994, and it does align to the work that we're doing, the training, the support that we provide our high school teachers, because we're addressing both, the Bible and, yes, help of course, the exams. Thank you.
My great relatives are not able to participate at all.
Yes.
And then when, is this something that you're doing outside of their educational age? Is there any built-in?
So there is opportunities that we provide similar to what we've done at the, they have their conference period, and we also often do things like do our learning fair. I know Dr. Fajar provides sessions within like our learning fair, so they can come, do the work, they get their PD hours from that, these kind of learning lab opportunities. So yeah, they have that flexibility to do it at home, they can do it at their conference periods, they can even come to this learning opportunity.
What is a large lack for this?
Oftentimes, there is a facilitator who is there to provide support, whether that be technology support or actually content support, and also someone to, oh, make sure you have a quiet place to be able to work without interruption.
The 60 hours is a lot of the time, so, you know, that's the, the right. Is there any?
And so any teachers that are seeking the bilingual certification or ESL certification?
We are doing direct invites, because we do have ESL teachers that are on waivers that we requested to state, and there are bilingual teachers that are an exception. And so we request that waiver for one year, and it is up to the teachers to become certified. This is above and beyond, this is a grant that we applied for, and people were always partnering with the university. So the responsibility is on the teacher. We are now providing them the access, hopefully this way.
So we already have company to support every district level?
No, this is teachers that agreed to take the job and go on a waiver. They're not certified in either ESL as ESL teachers or as bilingual teachers. And so the state does allow us to put some waiver for that, for that one year, and it allows them to teach. What the state requires is that they get certified within that year.
It's on their own, is it?
They do it on their own. However, we wrote this grant with A&amp;M to provide the additional support. We do some PREPS, you know, to help our teachers, but this is above and beyond, because it is, they're responsible to become certified within one year.
Five, leave some extra support. Is there someone I can rely on?
But our teachers have mentors, so all teachers have mentors, but when they sign on, they know they're signing on as a waiver, and it's a one year. And so this is what we're doing above and beyond. They know they're pretending that they won't. Yes, so to participate in this, they know that it's, there's a possibility I won't get a mentor, but I am getting access to all of this training and all of this support and labs and all of that, which they normally would not, they choose not to. So we are doing direct invites to everyone that we have on the program, for an exception to get them in the program, because if they don't, if they're certified, very similar to the, any other one-year commitment, they, they will not be.
So no such thing, no success, getting that certificate for, in order to have the desert, that's why. Is there any requirement that they need to take the participation, that they should request?
Yes, I tell you, not, we're part of this grant, and I forgot, I mean, we lobby for to be part of this grant, and so it is something above and beyond. We'll definitely check in back with the professors as we select the teachers and they begin their six-week cycle. It is for commitment, for three times, we're investing in them, like, to, 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 to stay with us. I don't think the ankle monitor works out.
Outside of the ankle monitor. Our next item, I'd like to recognize our chief of academics, Frank Correa.
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, the seat members of the board and superintendent. Before you, we have an MOU, and I'm asking that the board approve the clinical placement site agreement with the University of Arkansas College of Education and Health Professions, Eleanor Mann School of Nursing. Basically, in a nutshell, not to read everything here verbatim, is we have an incredible opportunity and partnership with this university in being able to place students who are needing clinical practicum experience through the bachelor's, master's, or doctoral program in nursing. The university is seeking a partnership with Spring for these specific students that are seeking this clinical practicum experience to be able to utilize our facilities, specifically our clinical spaces, potentially even classrooms or dining spaces as required by the practicum experience. The best part about this, outside of us being able to be engaged in this partnership, is it's also a fantastic recruitment opportunity as well. The hope would be is that they fall in love with Spring, just like all of our employees do, going through this experience and hopefully being able to retain them in Spring ISD as future nurse practitioners.
I thought this document, wow, really is nicely written. It covers a lot of key tendencies, but that when things go wrong, this is how we're dealing with it. But I thought it was interesting on page 191, that it says governing law under 18.0, this agreement should be governed by extreme ending of laws of the state of Arkansas. So anything that we, we could do in this agreement will be in the state of Arkansas. I assume that is what it is.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Maybe, that may be something we were surprised as it goes through the routing process, but...
That piece, yes. Through routing, yes.
They haven't gone for bigger yet.
Correct.
So if my student teacher works a semester that they would come here?
Yes, ma'am. And currently, if this does get approved by the board, we do have five students that are already in process, ready to take advantage of this experience.
Do we, are we planning to have any type of support for them, their, their program?
Absolutely. Well, one of the greatest things, too, about this program, and plus it's a very small group, Dr. Thomas is actually going to be overseeing their practicum experience, but she's also going to be the point of contact, I'll be communicating with the university that will be discussing the progress and all of those other pieces, but she will be establishing a very close rapport with each of these respective students. Yes, ma'am.
You can continue with the next item.
Thank you, Madam President. Next item is I'm asking the board to approve the TEA Remote Homebound Instruction Waiver. It is a large read, so what I will do is just summarize this for you. Basically, this is something that the board has typically approved. It's an annual renewal. What it does is it specifically allows us the opportunity to be able to offer remote instruction that is, that's going to be purely digital, not in-person, but some of the, this also allows us to also be able to utilize ADA as well as the weighted funding, so we can actually get credit for the participation of those students that are leveraging the remote homebound instructional model. Currently, right now in Spring, I believe we have 38 students that qualify for homebound instruction, but only out of the 38, we have one currently that qualifies for homebound instruction, but without in-person support or instruction. So this would support that one student, but this waiver would also open it up for any other students that have severe medical disabilities that would impede them from in-person instruction. This would also allow us to be able to bring them in, and they would also count towards our funding model as well.
Without going to, we...
I was just making sure I captured everything. Dr. Edwards is here, so.
I'm just curious, as much as you can say, what would qualify a student to, for just the digital as opposed to in-person?
That's a very good question, and I'm glad that Dr. Edwards is here, because she would be able to articulate that better than I would. Thank you, Dr. Edwards.
So we have very specific scenarios in which students IEP and the R. Committee would make a determination that remote instruction for homeback would be more appropriate, and that could look like students that they have immune deficiency syndromes or issues that would require that they not have anyone in their... That is being proposed for this consideration has as part of their disability, but it's not necessarily something that every student that accesses homebound services would be able to...
But it's not necessarily something that every student that accesses homebound services would be able to receive. It would be something very intentional through the R process and it would need to be supported by their IP. They also would have to qualify for homebound services in the first place, which is also supported by medical doctor information.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Klaunert. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our general counsel, Danielle Brinkley.
Good evening. On page 199, you'll find the item for the second reading of board policy BJCD Local, which is the superintendent's evaluation. Last month, the board had the first reading of this, of the revisions to this policy, which were developed by the Board Governance Committee, I believe, at Mr. Adams' lead. And so because this is the second reading, I would just ask if there are any questions or if Mr. Adams had any comments to add to that. Mr. Adams, I see you're still reading, so I just didn't want to bypass you, okay? If there are questions then, we will turn to page 202. And it is time for our annual review of our investment policy, which is CDA Local. And to provide a little bit more explanation of that annual review, I'm going to ask this Anne Westbrooks to turn on her mic and talk us through this.
Yes, thank you. So as Mr. Brinkley mentioned, this is the annual review of our investment policy. And so we're required to review it and bring it to the board for approval once a year. And so with our investment policy, any investments that the district makes, all under the public funds investment. The only changes that we're making on this year's policy review is just some wording changes that just make things align more closely with the legal language, but also make it more understandable. So the first change is on page 205 of our binders, page 3 of 9 of CDA Local. And so we're just changing the wording around regarding the investment training that myself, as CFO, and our director of finance, who's the other investment officer for the district, it speaks to the amount of training that we have to receive. So when you're new in this role, within the first year, you have to have 10 hours of training. But then after that, you have to have eight hours of professional training for investment, excuse me, investment training over a two-year span. So each year, we have to hand off to our auditors our investment training certificates that show that we're adhering to this policy. So the blue language is just rewriting the way that the red language was written to make it a little bit more clear. That's what needs to happen. And then on page 4 of 9, or page 126 of your binders, it's just again updating that language. So with our investments, our number one goal is always safety, which is preserve our principle. And so in here, we said preserve the principle and we just changed the language to say preservation of principle, which just aligns directly with the new policy language. And so those are the only changes that we have for this review. It's a non-legis, it is a legislative year, but it's a non-legislative year in this respect because there hasn't been legislation since the last time we brought it. And so there's not a lot of changes. If there are changes that happen with our requirements at the legislative session, the next time we bring this, you'll see more substantive changes. Right now, it's just wording for clarification.
In addition to the annual review, this would be the first reading of this policy that the board would approve on Tuesday. And so we would bring it back for a second reading through our normal policy procedures. Just to formalize these changes. If there are no questions, then I'll come with my own question.
Thank you, Mr. So for our next item, I'll go ahead and recognize our chief financial officer, Anne Westbrook. Thank you, Frank Sandgren. The first item begins on page 212 of the binders and it is our monthly look at taxpayer refers. Just checking to see if there are any questions on this. Get back to now. We go into the next item, which is our monthly report of cooperative purchases that exceed $50,000. No questions on that item, then we'll keep going?
Yes. The, I think it's part of the, it's, 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 or is this something that we did out? I'm curious because building the career map, I didn't know if that was going to go back to. The man, the cargo man, looking how to get out the van. Who did the purchase, I mean, the little school block? But that allows, that allows us to give you a lot faster. I just wanted to know whether tier three laptops.
It's a tier three in our distribution phase. So we purchased 100 laptops with that, which was able to allow us to upgrade all teacher laptops at Westfield High School, Spring High School, and the other schools.
Because we have, we already have agreements with our, we work group cooperatives, so there's already agreements with the officials. And so we don't group the cooperative, all of the purchases that we work down, we're able to just purchase. Because the least time one official will have to give, they have to put on it, especially if we need to, we can be pretty long. So the use of the cooperative shortens the time that we want to.
Anne, we're, we have, well, cooperative is a competitive procurement process.
Yes, the cooperatives, they actually conduct the competitive procurement process and we're able to leverage not only their procurement process, but also the buying power of all of those local agencies that are in the license block.
Speaking of cooperatives, the next item is an annual report of cooperative fees. So to that.
You don't know that?
Yes.
Just want to put it on the record, the 1.5 million from Kelly Services, I'm so opposed to that. I'm just putting it on record that, for us to be how it just is, not for the 1.5 million to Kelly Services. That's a lot of, that's a lot. I just keep getting mad thinking about the number of staff that we could probably hire to do this now at 1.5 million. I'd really like for HR to consider that.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the annual report of cooperative fees. So this is a legally required report that we bring forward to board once a year that says how much does it cost the district to be a part of the cooperative? And so what you see here, starting on page 220, is a list of the 15 cooperatives that the district, we are a part of those cooperatives and we utilize the services of those. It talks through why we have the cooperative in place because a lot of costs we, we enter for those agreements for a specific commodity. And other times, there's lots of things that we use it for. For example, we have the DIR, which is for technology. So it just explains what those cooperatives are mostly known for and what we typically use them for. And then starting on page 222 at the bottom, you can see the fees that are associated with being a part of the cooperative. By and large, there's no cost to the district. It's either a very nominal fee or there's no cost associated with being part of the cooperative. Those vendors that are a part of it and that respond to those are a fee. They can do their costs, not that the districts and the government, etc., this is the thing. So it's a requirement, but it's also more so of an apply to where, which cooperatives we use and those fees. So the most they cost us, that's like just saying for $100, it's small. And we do pay a fee when we purchase vehicles. The largest fee that you'll see us pay is when we buy a bus. When we buy a bus, usually it's about $80, is what we'll pay per bus, or, excuse me, not per bus, per purchase order. So if we order 20 buses on one PEO, we just pay that.
So it's a task with five or six vehicles for the PEO?
Yes, so if we purchase vehicles, what I mentioned just a month ago, with HGAC, that one is $800 per PEO. With my board, it's $100. So it's pretty inexpensive. So we're just saying that we have $200 that's. Okay, next item, there are no more questions. It's on page 225. And this is a request for proposal for professional development, speakers, consultants, trainers, and related services and materials. And so this is a request for proposal that is coming back for the second time because we're trying to qualify as many of our professional development providers as possible. So we, instead of doing this every five years or every year, we're doing it right now every six months to try to get as many of our vendors qualified as possible. And so in this particular solicitation, we had 43 vendors that responded. And we were able to look at their qualifications back to the fees that were listed in the request for proposal and we made it up on 39 of those 43 vendors. And the ones that are listed as disqualified were actually ones that have been awarded in the previous one. So I guess they saw it, the R and said, oh, they respond to it, but we had already qualified them. So we disqualified them this time around because they're already listed in the fifth month. Next item is on page 230. And this is the request for proposal for construction bond audit services. So as you all recall, with the 2016 bond program, we hired an external audit firm that came in and were handling the district review of those pay applications and review change orders and those sorts of things. And the board gave us the charge to create that for the 2022 bond program as well. So we issued this request for proposal. We have three vendors that have responded. And the vendor that we're recommending is actually the incumbent vendor, which was the helping that formed the external audit for the 2016 bond program. So that's our recommendation. So for the next item is the second budget review. And you actually have a loophole at your desk for this one. And so this is the second budget review since the budget was about 15 June of 2022. And so again, fairly quiet as far as the changes that we're making to the budget right now. But that doesn't necessarily mean that things are quiet. We're just waiting until we know exactly what's what before we bring those changes to your third budget review. Some things that we do know that are happening right now is what we've talked about throughout this year. And that's what's happening with our student attendance, which has an impact on our state revenue. And so we'll make adjustments for that as we get a much clearer picture of what that's going to look like on the third budget review. But if you want to turn, we'll need to the first, the letter view on the first page. In the general fund, we're only anticipating an increase of $20,000, just over $20,000. And that's related to insurance recovery, where we filed a claim on our insurance and we received the proceeds from that. And then we put the funds in the resulting department that's ACJ to utilize those insurance recovery fees. On the expenditure side of general fund, we've got that offsetting expenditure for the insurance, but also that's $685,000 to purchase the ACJ parking lot that came in for. And so that's putting the budget there for that purchase. So the next one is child nutrition. And we didn't have any changes to revenues or appropriations in the child nutrition fund on this review. We're anticipating the fund balance to be 9.4 million in child nutrition. On the debt service side of the funds, no changes in debt service either. Anticipating a fund balance of 76.4 million dollars. We will see some changes in activity when we bring the third budget review because as you know, we sold that first tranche of bonds back a couple of weeks ago. And so we'll see some activity happening in the third review. In our special revenue funds, we had an increase in revenues and appropriations equal offset of $391,000. And the, what is it, the largest part of that change had to be some dollar part. That is funding a position for us for our opportunity culture. And so we received those funds and budgeted for that. So that was a part of the increase this time around. So with the changes in our special revenue fund, the resulting fund balance that we're looking at is at 1.2 million dollars and that amount will be a little for school like 20 months. And the reason for that is because all the funds that are related to special revenue, the revenue is only coming in when the expenditure happens, so that's balancing out. Whatever's left is funded, yes, for our school. On the capital projects firm, we had an increase of about $77,000 for revenues and expenditures and that was related to interest that we've seen. For staffing allocations, we had an increase of five positions, two administrator positions. There was one at Momentum High School, which was actually there at the adopted budget, it was making change down on the books. And the second one was at Dammel Little School. Three additional professional positions, a decrease of one fair professional position and an increase of one classified position, which offset one another for net increase of nine positions. So those are the highlights of what's happened during this budget review. But it's always, you have all the details and if there are questions, talk to your questions that you have. Questions? Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our chief of operations, Mark Moore. She got one more. Yeah, one more, I'm sorry. Yes, one last one. It's on, that's okay, it's on page 235. And this is, so she was here this evening, but she hasn't heard the training class tomorrow morning, so she left. So we had to, we lost our director of finance, which is the investment officer for the district along with myself. And so we had to lose her. She went to work for her family. And so we had to replace her position. Since her position is the, one of the investment officers for the district, that means we have to add this new people who isn't very highly qualified. I truly wish you could have hung around for a bit longer. Then I played a vision with the Spring Act, the finance department. She came to us from, I'm going to say, she didn't, because it's close to Flint, that she's from, but she was the director of finance there and it's just going to get her out running. But we can add her to our banking, or our depository bank at PNC and TEC, which is one of our investment pools. And they both require a warrant action in order to make that happen. And for good reason, natural reason we're adding her to our banking. So if you look on page 239 of your books, you can see here, myself, my name is Westbrook. My signature, Loda Johnson, is our calculator of finance and that too. We're asking the board to take action on the scene to allow us to add her to our PNC banking account as well as our TEC banking account. And it gives her the authority to open and close banking accounts. It stands on. It says on here that she has the authority to sign checks to the banks, but hopefully they're authorities, but our policy does not give her the authority to sign checks. Our Board President and Bureau Secretary signed checks for this district, and myself would be the vote, the second signer on that two-month check. Loda Johnson, that's the Director of Finance, would not sign any checks for this district. But she would have the ability to add and subtract users from the banking, to open bank accounts. And an example of that is with the new bond, we had to open a new bank account that doesn't require us to come back to the board, which our authority has let the district to have an additional second payment on the half of this quarter. So that's what these two reservations are, and you all see these very often, but those positions, they have been turned off very often. So this is part of the finance, this is what comes up. Any questions? And that was your last one, great. Thank you, Ms. Westbrooks. Now I'd like to recognize our Chief of Operations, Mark Lord.
Thank you, President Durand, Dr. Gennos, some members of the board. This is the regular report for the Intruder Protection Audit Report Findings. Since our last presentation to you last month, there were three audits performed. Two of those audits resulted in no findings, and one audit resulted in one finding. Can that conclude our work?
Any questions? The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session. We convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.076, and 551.0821. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes in an open session. Time is now 11:04. Now reconvene and resume the work session of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 12:35 a.m. We will now address any items that were discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the board render a final order determining contracts of Kerry Mullis and Vanessa Rios. As presented in closed session, authorize the Superintendent to provide assistance for the board's action, the impact of employees pursuant to chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution of the style, the matter styles, Spring ISD versus Carlos Jackson, docket number 021 LH 1122, according to the terms discussed in closed session.
Second, the move by Trustee McDaniel's and second by Trustee Newhouse, that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution of the matter styles, Spring ISD versus Carlos Jackson, docket number 021 LH 1122, according to the terms discussed in closed session. Second, the move by Trustee McDaniel's and second by Trustee Newhouse, that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution of the matter styles, Spring ISD versus Carlos Jackson, docket number 021 LH 1122, according to the terms discussed in closed session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And motion carries unanimously. Given there are no other items on tonight's agenda, I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn our meeting for this morning.
This is the symbol of Trustee Newhouse's, second by Trustee Adams', adjourn this morning's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Tonight's meeting adjourns at 12:37 a.m.
8:00.